Here.
District five, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District six, Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District seven, Deborah Robinson.
Here.
We have quorum with all seven board members present. Also joining us on dais is Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanoi. And joining us here at the tables in front of us until they can once again join us at the dais after social distancing requirements are no longer necessary, our deputy general counsel, Blair Littlejohn, and board clerk Carol Bass. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast channels 234 and 235, U-verse channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage, palmbeachschools.org. We also offer a listening only option which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900, or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1-561-880-1124. This meeting is being transcribed by a closed captioner, so please remember to speak at a reasonable pace. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to be led by the superintendent?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to withdraw this time.
Board members, we need a motion to approve the agenda, motion by Mrs. Woodfield, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Are there any disclosures or abstentions? Seeing none, we have no speakers, no items in the consent agenda. Mr. Superintendent, that'll take us to new business EXP1.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board expel student 2021-X-001 from the regular public school program of the School District of Palm Beach County from November 19, 2020 through August 1, 2021.
Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Discussion? Just want the family to know that all of these, this hearing is confidential, that student's name is not being released to the public. We had the first meeting confidential, nobody heard it. This meeting is being publicly broadcast, but your name is not, the family's name is not being released to the, to anyone. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion by Vice Chairwoman Brill, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Meeting is adjourned. Okay. So wait for that. Call the workshop to order. The board clerk does not have to take the role again. We'll stipulate that all seven board members are still present at the meeting. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at this time, our first workshop for the evening is policy 5.016, school choice and program, an alternative to our chief academic officer, Dr. Klinda Sheffield.
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Fanoi. Today's workshop is to provide an update to the district's choice, choice schools and programs policy 5.016. The focus of today's workshop will include changes and updates to the current policy language, an addition of a new lottery preference for our K-8 continuum that we've been talking about for quite some time. At this time, Mr. Bogus and Dr. Johnson will provide an overview of the recommended updates and additions to policy 5.016. Mr. Bogus, I'll turn it over to you to get us started.
Mr. Bogus, before you begin, if I could just ask the board, considering we have three pretty heavy workshops, if we can save our questions to the end of the workshop so we can get through them, I would appreciate that. Thank you. End of each individual workshop, excuse me.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Fanoi. Thank you, Dr. Sheffield. Greetings, Chairman Barbieri and school board. This afternoon, we come to you as part of a follow-up to our November choice workshop to further discuss choice policy 5.016. As a nation and state, public school choice in many instances continues to be redefined and expanded in ways that a decade ago were not available. Even through COVID, our choice team has innovated and expanded opportunities to continue to meet the needs of our learners and families that align with a student's passion and to create impact in their life well beyond the classroom setting. In order to continue to best serve our students and families, we have taken a deep dive into the choice policy and more specifically, the procedures manual outlined within the policy. The scope of the choice policy outlines choice schools, program eligibility, procedures for applying to these programs, and requirements as part. Specifically, in this policy, we will be focusing on update revisions to the procedure manual, further clarifying definitions and framing content to make it more user-friendly for our families, also including best practices learned through COVID that have reshaped our work within choice. In collaboration with Dr. Johnson, we will work through the substantive changes proposed in the next few slides, which include: the addition of the new lottery preference K-8 continuum, exit timeframe of a student from a program, addition of the district non-discrimination statement, definition for types of programs and each eligibility for process, guidance on full dual-language programs at zone schools, language to clarify ineligible to reapply to a program, language to identify annual audition platform and establish timeline for auditions, and clarification around student residency, primary address, and waitpool status. The K-8 continuum is our first talking point. Our choice team heard the board very clearly in November around the revision to our current K-8 structure and alignment. Key piece, as we reshape the language, was to affirm the matriculation pattern from K through 5 to 6th grade and following through the completion to 8th grade. This language and preference allows continuation in a K-8 school for students who either reside in the attended zone for kindergarten through 5th grade, or have been attending for grades 4 and 5. We have also included language that students residing in the attended zone, or who have attended the school for grades 4 and 5, had the first right of refusal to the seat prior to any other applicant being assigned. If declined, all other applicants can be considered via random selection choice process. We believe that this is student-centric language that captures the truest intent of a K-8 within our district. At this time, Dr. Johnson will lead us through the remaining substantive changes to choice policy 5.016. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Bogus. Good afternoon, Chairman Barbieri, school board members, Dr. Fanoi, and all that are present here today. I would like to go through several of the substantive changes that are built into today's presentation. The first substantive change that I'd like to talk about is very simply, we're adding into the procedures manual the non-discrimination statement in three languages. That was missing in previous procedures manuals, so we wanted to make sure that that was included. The next one is, we are adding a statement for program process eligibility, giving us an opportunity to clarify and make sure that that language is clear, clearer to our parents. The second, the third substantive change defines the types of programs available. We often get asked the question, what's the difference between an in-house program, a choice program, a full-choice program? So we added language in there that would define what those differences are. The next one is a substantive change that we're actually still actively seeking input, but the language now adds in a definition for a school-wide program for dual-language. We have two schools that have a full-wide school dual-language program, and so, as I said, we've added some language, but we are in the process of massaging that language to make it read more inclusive. And so, we still actively seek input around that. That is referenced in lines 115 through 125 in the policy. The next substantive change deals with students who apply to another program at a school, they currently attend on choice and are exited from the program, may not be assigned to another program at the school that they were exited from. This just supports and further clarifies language that is already existing in the choice procedures manual. The next substantive change came about because of COVID-19. So it provides information related to the audition platform, and guidelines will be published annually. We wanted to make sure that we put language in there that gave us the flexibility to switch from in-person auditions to be able to utilizing a virtual platform. We haven't had that language before because we didn't need it, but we felt we needed to put something in here that would allow us to have that flexibility. Lines 302 to 303, we added a timeframe to provide accommodation plan for the audition process, again, making sure that we are providing for the needs of our ESE students, to be able to prepare for auditions and the ability to offer those accommodations. Working with our ESE staff needs to review those accommodation plans, and in some cases, be present for the audition. So we added that new language. The next change is, provides clarification to the residency status of the applicant prior to application submission and audition. Parents residing in different states or counties apply for their child using a non-custodial parent address. This clarifies the residency to deem applicant eligible for choice procedures. The next substantive change defines student address for application process. When parents are divorced or separated, address determines student's eligibility to apply for a program. So school district policy provides guidance in 5.01 for divorced or separated parents to enroll their child at his own school. However, there has been no guidance in the determination of custodial parent for the purposes of choice application submission that would determine eligibility and being able to apply for a program. So the added language states that if parents are divorced or separated, the address of the primary custodial parent will be used to determine residency for purposes of applying for a choice program. And we received very great feedback in collaborating with legal on this particular language. The next substantive change, I'm going to skip real quick over that because Mr. Bogus has reviewed the new K-8 language that has been added to the procedures manual, as it referenced the K-8 continuum for our K-8 schools. The next substantive change adds clarification of the waitpool status. As a result of this question being asked almost every year, we added language so that we had some clarity. That basically says if a student declines his or her second-choice seat, he or she may remain in the waitpool for their first choice. However, there is no guarantee of assignment into the first-choice program, and a second-choice assignment may not be reclaimed at a later, a later time if they decline it. Next, we have a substantive change. We move some information from one location to a different location, and this has to do with the timeframe for exiting students to end at the marking period rather than the semester. So I want to talk about that a little bit. When students are in our choice programs, they sign a contract. The contract deals with behavior. It also deals with the academics in order for students to remain in the program. If students are not successful, either from an academic standpoint or behavior standpoint, they then are given a probationary period. Students during that probationary period have interventions that are put in place to either assist them with academics or with behavior. So we don't want this to be misconstrued that schools will have the ability to just say, hey, this student's not succeeding. At the end of the nine weeks, we're going to exit them. That is not what this is for. This is for if a student is not being successful, either academically or from a behavior standpoint, they automatically will be brought to a committee. The committee will determine what the best course of action for, place them on probation, give them interventions, the necessary supports, and then determine whether or not they will be exited. What happens a lot of times is, students are put on probation and, you know, we want to make sure that they are given the actual interventions that are necessary for them to be successful, particularly for our ESE and our ELL students. We want to make sure that our students are getting the necessary supports. So that's what this language does. And that is the end of all of the substantive changes. There are some other changes throughout the policy. The majority of those are seen as a change, but really, it's just moving language from one area in the policy to another area. So it's really not a change per se in the language, but just moving things around in the policy for clarity. Thank you so much, and we'll take your questions.
Vice Chair, Brill.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, just so you know, I am going to have a follow-up question to my first one, and I'm not saying this to be facetious. I'm not asking this to be facetious. But what do you believe is the purpose of a K-8 school? One of you?
Go ahead.
The purpose of our K-8 institutions, our schools, is the idea that a student could start with us in kindergarten and finish in 8th grade. It is a competitive edge that I believe as a, or that we believe as a district is going to not only attract and retain our students, but also providing what our stakeholders, at least from our families, were hearing back, that they want to be able to drop off and pick back up, drop off as a kindergarten and pick back up as 8th grade.
Okay, so now, as a follow-up, that is not what our policy procedures manual is doing, or the changes that you made. And what I'm saying here is that when a parent puts a child into a K-8 school, whether it's kindergarten, 1st grade, 3rd grade, their expectation is their child, if you're going into a K-8 school, is going to go through the program to 8th through 8th grade, not that they're going to have to apply again in 6th grade if there are enough seats for them. And we talk all the time in here about competing with the charter schools, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, in my district, we have two K-8 charter schools, right? They don't have to apply. If a student enters in the elementary grades, they continue through 8th grade. That's my vision of a K-8. That's my, you know, in my area, that's what parents are seeking. The language that you have in your procedures manual on page three, first of all, I know you, you mention it again later, but it does not support what you said about preference. It starts off saying a K-8 school is a district school offering kindergarten through 8th grade. Students assigned to the attendance boundary for K to 5 grades do not automatically continue to the middle grades. It doesn't say that they get a preference, okay? It says, middle grades in a K-8 school do not have attendance boundaries. Students must participate in the choice process for an opportunity to attend or continue in the middle grades of a K-8 school. And then further on, when you talk about it a little bit more, it states if there are enough seats at the school. So I will never support a K-8, at least in my district or in the district, unless those children who are enrolled in those, in those early years are guaranteed an option. And that's what I thought was expressed at our other board meeting, you know, our other workshop. I can't, I don't know why you wouldn't have enough seats, but, but that's my concern.
Okay, Ms. Brill, I mean, we hear-
Dr. Sheffield, let me interrupt one second. I've been told that the YouTube link is down, but viewers can watch the, can continue watching the meeting on Comcast 234 and ATT-U verse 99. The meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on the school board website in its entirety. Sorry for the interruption. Go ahead, Dr. Sheffield.
I mean, Ms. Brill, we hear you. I mean, when we came back, back in November, I think it was, as it pertains to an update on choice, there was no K-8 policy or continuum that was even discussed in policy. And I think there was a perception that if you automatically went to a K-8 school, that you matriculated all the way through, and that was not indeed the case, right? So what I would say that this is, I think, is a deeper, a deeper conversation. So if we are wanting to, as a board, and is that the will of the board, to really pull out the K-8 and do a workshop, for the board to give us some directions around what is the expectation around the K-8, then that may be something that we will need to do. Because I think everyone have a different perspective or understanding in regards to the purpose of the establishments of the K-8s that were coming within the district.
You have a follow-up, Ms. Brill?
Well, my only, thank you. My, my only follow-up is that in speaking to families, and families I know that have, whether it's in Florida or elsewhere, exercised the option of a K-8 for their child, they do it because they want the consistency. They want the child to go through middle school. You know, what's the purpose of putting them in there and then splitting them off and sending them somewhere else? You know, to me, the purpose is K-8. It's kindergarten through 8th grade. In some schools I know in New York City, they do K-12. They don't apply every, every breakpoint. So that's my follow-up.
Mrs. Woodfield, and then Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I have a couple. First of all, I want to say how much I appreciate all of you bringing this to us. I know this is not easy. We, we have so much choice in this district, and it makes the rules and the making of the rules very difficult. So I want to say a huge thank you to you, and a huge thank you to Tara Kobel for answering my call when I call all the time. So I appreciate that. So a couple of things. The first thing I'm really worried about is Plomosa and the impact it's going to have on Carver. I, as a parent, completely understand wanting to send your kid to Plomosa, and I have heard from my residents since the minute I got elected how they wanted a K-8 program at Plomosa. They see it as a South County BAC. They want to have a school of the arts for South County. More kids than just zoned for Plomosa want to go there. They want to have enough space so that students from the surrounding areas who want to do middle school arts have the opportunity to be there. And I'm concerned, I obviously want that to happen. I'm concerned about the way we're talking about it right now, whereas all of the Plomosa kids would continue going to Plomosa, that there wouldn't be a lot of opportunities for kids outside of that area to be able to go there. And then, just automatically assigning kids from any area that is currently zoned for Carver to Plomosa without even having to make a decision means a very detrimental impact, I think, on Carver, which is already not doing as great as I'd like it to do. It's a little under-enrolled from where I'd like it to be, and I know the perception has been tough for many years. So I think we need to think about, if we are going to have a K-8 mean that we're taking all those kids and they're going directly through, those are some larger boundary changes that have to be made throughout the entire district, where we're going to have to look and see, you know, what students do we actually want to go to these comprehensive middle schools? Because they will get hurt through this process, and maybe that's an opportunity for us to grow them and do better. But I think there are, I have some real concerns about what this is going to do to that school, and maybe it can make it better. The question I wanted to ask you guys about with the dual language, until Dr. Johnson mentioned about the whole school dual language, I didn't understand that we even had those. I thought they were always an opportunity for English classes within there. So what happens when a student doesn't want to participate in the dual-language program and they're at those schools? How does that, how do you deal with that when they are at a school that's a whole school dual language? How does that work?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. So, right now, we have two schools in that situation, Gulf, Gulf and Westgate. And so, right now, students do have the opportunity to choose and opt out if they so choose to. But one of the things that we want to do is make sure we clarify the language that if they do not want to choose to leave the school, that they have the opportunity to stay at their zone school and be accommodated in English language.
Oh, so they can stay. You're working on making it so that they can stay if they want to?
Yes. Yes. So, yes, we are taking feedback and going back and clarifying that language so that it, it speaks to that.
So I guess the only question I would have around kind of these programs in general, going forward with the K-8s, just so I can wrap this whole thing up, is, do we have enough space to have every kid stay through middle school in these K-8 programs? Or is that one of the reasons why we don't have every kid immediately matriculate? Is that part of the problem?
Capacity is certainly part of this issue, yes. Plomosa specifically, I think we're okay with. But the policy would be impactful to our entire district when it comes to K-8s. When you look at other schools such as Addison Meisner starting up, or even Conservatory as it stands, capacity is a significant issue.
So I mean, if we're going forward with this, we're going to have to really start thinking boundary changes, and I think that is a fight that nobody ever wants to have because it's, it's really can be very rough. So I'm a little concerned about how we do that going forward, and we don't just put an undue burden on these schools. When we give them something great like a K-8, I don't want to make their lives miserable because now they have all, you know, they're packing people in and we're ending up with a, a super overcrowded school, or families that are really, you know, upset that they didn't get to go into their schools. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson, and then Ms. Andrews?
Thank you. So I have somewhere between 15 and 20 comments, so I split them up. So I, I'm going to start with the procedures manual, and I'm going to start with line eight and nine. "The school board also provides equal access to the Boy Scouts and other designated youth groups." I will not be supporting that statement. I, I, you know, all you got to do is Google it, right? And so, so, you know, I just Googled it since we've been sitting here, and it's what, is it 84,000 sexual abuse claims against the Boy Scouts? Now, I, I have been told by, I can't even remember who now in legal, that this is required by the Office of Civil Rights. I'm going to work under the assumption that this is a requirement of OCR from the prior presidential administration. I'm going to assume right now that the current administration would not find this so favorable. It really bugs me that they would call out the Boy Scouts, right, and other designated youth groups, right? So my request is that we ask our lobbyists to find out if there's a change of heart in Washington about OCR requiring that we give some favor to an organization that's had all these claims made against them. And then, according to what I'm looking at, they offered, I can't even find how many millions of dollars in settlement. They offered that. So that's a whole heap of admittance, if you ask me. The request, I think, was some billions, 103 billion? They offered however many millions. That's a whole lot of admitting to wrong, or trying to make it go away. Whatever it is, I, like, and I'm, I'm not saying the Boy Scouts is all bad. What I'm saying is, Boy Scouts should not be in our policy. So I'm gonna leave that there. I'm gonna move on. But I do hope you hear my request about taking it to our lobbyist, Dr. Fanoi. So-
Yes, ma'am. We, we would have to, because if it's by statute, we'd have to get some cover to even take it out. So we'll, we'll pull it forward, that.
Yeah, it's in, it's on the OCR's website, because I couldn't believe it. But yeah, I won't be voting for it. So then, let's go on to line 16. "Lack of English language skills would not be a barrier to admission and participation." Now, I'm quite sure I understand why that was included, and that's trying to say that students who are designated as English language learners would not be precluded from our choice programs. But let me take it a step further. Why did then do we have GPA requirements? Because, I mean, I, the GPA requirements are kind of tied to my English language skills, I think, right? So I'm just saying, I think that needs to be reworded, to like, say what we mean. So I'm just saying, I think that needs to be reworded to, like, say what we mean. If that's what, if that's what we mean, if we mean the English language learners are not precluded, then can we say that? Okay. So now, let's move on. I want, start touching on the K-8. I'm sure I won't finish it in my first round of comments here. But, so if we go to lines 120 to 125. So I agree with you, Mrs. Brill, and that's why I kind of, my hair caught on fire several months ago about this whole K-8, and I called it the bait and switch. So I, I do appreciate staff's efforts to try to find a way to make the policy fit all, right? And so because I have asked, it seems like, 3 million questions about this, I'm very clear that many of our schools that are K-8 do not have enough designated sixth grade seats to accommodate even all of their own fifth graders, right? But for Plomosa, we got it right with the, with the facility meeting the needs of the academic program. And so for Plomosa, the, even if each and every fifth grade student stayed, there's still like 25%, the, the numbers have changed. Every time I ask a question, it changes a little bit. So I have to ask Mr. Link what he's doing. But, but there's, there's a significant bunch of seats left for students who had not been in the elementary program. And so the only thing that I want to add in line 121, so it says, "Students assigned to the attendance boundary for the K-5 grade levels do not automatically continue to the middle grades." I think that that should say, and, and I've been through this with, I harassed staff yesterday. Thank you so much for, for working with me and hearing what I'm trying to say here. So I think it should read, "A K-8 school is a district school offering kindergarten through eighth grade. Students assigned to the school due to the attendance boundary for K-5 grade levels do not automatically continue to the middle grades," period. However, they have the right of first refusal. I think that that needs to be inserted there. It's stated elsewhere. It's important to me that it's stated there, right? Now, let me, I want to address this, this concern about Carver. So the, the success of a school is not, we don't make schools successful by denying children opportunity to go to other schools. I remember many years ago, when, in having this conversation, when we started this rapid expansion of the choice programs, the then board chair said, "Well, what do we do if nobody chooses the school?" We find out why they're not choosing it, and we make it better, right? We don't deny opportunity to children who went for, in this case, to Plomosa for K-5. We don't deny them the opportunity to stay at their school to continue the program just to provide access to other children, right? And let me be really, really clear. So some of this, some of this conversation where people say those kind of things, and maybe it wasn't heard this way by everybody, but I hear it clearly. You know, Plomosa K-5 is overwhelmingly black and brown, okay? Some of these people who say this stuff actually mean those black and brown children need to go over to Carver, okay, and make room for the white children, okay? I'm, that's my world. And so I just want to be clear. I'm not, I'm not with that. I'm with you, Ms. Brill. If they've been there, if we called it a K-8, they need to be able to stay there through eighth grade. And, and, and I do appreciate the fact that staff is trying to figure out how to make the policy fit all of the different variables. So I'm going to move on. So under, line 139, so this talks about, this is talking about the student and whether or not they have to go attend, if their zone school has the program they're requesting, they have to attend that program in their zone school as opposed to that program in a different school. And then it says, "With limited exceptions." Okay. So what I learned yesterday is there's one exception, and it is, it's the next sentence. "A student applying to a school that's currently at 95% capacity above will be able to apply first choice to another school." Okay. So I, I requested that word "limited" be changed to "one." So we are clear. It's not two, it's not three, it's one, and it's stated in the next sentence. And I'm going to just do a couple more, this, this go around here. So the issue of the dual language, so I know you're addressing it. So I just, okay, I, I, actually, this will be my last comment at this point. I do have many more, but I'm going to belabor this point a bit because, you know, history is instructive. And I know Mr. Bogus and Dr. Johnson have heard this, and so have people in legal. But it bugs me how things change, right? Same situation, things change. So the, I understand the year was 2012. I didn't recall the year initially. But Northborough Elementary was a Montezory school, right? And it had boundaries, right? And so one of our attorneys said, "Well, wait a minute. That is, it's inappropriate to have boundaries when, if a child moves across the street from the school in third grade, for example, if they had not previously been in Montezory, they were not allowed to go to the school across the street from their home because they had not been in Montezory." Compare and contrast to dual language and the fluency test, right? And so what we did with Northborough, we, we eliminated the boundaries, right? And we split those boundaries, and some of the kids went to Northmore, some went to Pleasant City. Now, I am not suggesting that we remove the boundaries from Westgate or Gulf. What I want to be clear about is that's how we solved the problem before. And it's still a problem here. So I'm really glad that we're going, we're working on that. But it just bugged me out that it, the inconsistencies lead to inequities, right? And, and that one, that was almost a hair on fire for me. So, so I'm going to hold the rest of my comments to my next go-round. Put me back on your list, please.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I think the recommendation from one of the board members, I definitely want the rest of the conversation to go on. But I think, staff, we need to go ahead and think about seriously having just a workshop just on the K-8s. Because I don't know, like, one of the comments Ms. Whitfield made, I wasn't here when the K-8 policy was raised, but as I read it, there was very clear that we wouldn't be changing boundaries when we initially went here. So, so it's very, so we might have to go back and review the history. Because, again, when you think, because part of the tension, I think, at the time was if you allow all these school kids in, then there could be an expectation of increasing the facility size, which we went through at Conservatory. And that was never part of the agreement to expect, make the schools bigger to accommodate these, these new K-8s. I think the language at Conservatory was really clear that if the middle school, if the elementary school got to its capacity, the middle school would actually get smaller. And we never did that. As a matter of fact, I remember when I took over, the school requested that we made the school bigger. And so we, we need to kind of go back and, and review with the entire board what we actually agreed to at the beginning. Because you're right, if we're going to create a consistent policy across the district, and if the new, if this current board wants something different, then we have to, we have to debate that.
All right. The order I have the board members want to speak is Mrs. Andrews, Ms. Whitfield, Dr. Robinson, and Ms. Brill. Ms. Andrews, you're first.
And thank you. And certainly with Mrs. Brill and Dr. Robinson, being a middle school person and looking at the K-8, there should not be any disruption. So I do agree that we need to have a workshop and let's get that done. Students are having a difficult time getting into choice programs as it is. So we really don't want to have someone that starts at the school and all of a sudden, by the time they get to fifth grade or sixth grade, then they're not eligible to stay where they belong. And you know the transition from elementary to middle school is, is major. And it's an emotional and social issue, too. So you really want to keep these kids together. This is their choice, their, their boundary area school. They should stay there until they graduate to go on to the high school. So that's just research that we would never want to disrupt the children. So that's important. But I'm so happy we're here today because I've already been working with Dr. Johnson on parents and confusion. And, you know, we, we still, with our choice programs, we don't look like, and, and I've been reading through this policy, and it sounds like we're equitable, but we're not. Because when we look at the different places where the programs are, I see a lack of equity in our, in, in an opportunity for many children to participate. And then I look at the criteria, you know, of being eligible at the secondary level as well as the middle school and, and level, and elementary level. And parents really don't know. This, these are nice, fine words on here that you got a committee at the school. The principal gets a chance to make some selections and so on. But people truly don't know what that's all about. They begin to call around. I know you have a packet and a booklet, but I don't know if we've actually done any in-service education for parents who truly want their children to be in the programs and how they can really make it happen. The policy sounds great with the changes. I love it with the, with the waitlist because people don't even know what that means when there's many children picking two, two choices, and they're really waiting on the other choice, and so on and so on. I have to fill tons of questions saying, well, they may get a chance if for some reason somebody picks something else and something opens up. I think you may have a lot of parents that are familiar with the choice program, and they know how to play this game better than other parents. But many parents don't know how to play the game. So we've got to figure out some way in here how we get a chance to give more options to other people. And I really don't see that. I, I just see that you do have the criteria. A lot of that rests with the school center and the parent. And actually having the great point level, it seems like, you know, everybody can work together to get somebody in. But I don't know if I see that happening as I'm moving around in schools. When it's done, you've gone through the audition process, you didn't make it, you're in the wait pool, you're ineligible, just like one parent is so upset right now with the school district, and we probably have many more, that their person didn't pass, you know, for Dreyfus. Because, you know, I guess they had tried to get as much training for their child as possible, and they didn't get a chance to get in. And so they don't even know what the next steps are. So when you read this, it looks like we're really helping a lot of people. But it's truly very confusing as we go through this policy. Because as I look at it, most parents don't even know all the pieces of this policy. So how do we really help those that may not have the ability to understand these words here for what the district is saying that we're doing to be equitable, to make sure that we have choices? And when we look at all of this, the school site, programs, we need them. We don't have a lot of choice in the Glades region. I mean, we just have a few. And the first thing, when people say they want to have a program, we don't have the transportation. There's always some reason why we can't do it. But when you read this, it looks like we, we can have the school base. And thank goodness, we did get the Royal Palm Beach IB program. With a lot of fighting, we got that, and that made a difference. But this, it means, it says a whole lot here that we're doing it, but we still don't have equity in the choice program so most children can get a real benefit. And certainly educating the parents when you look at this po, policy here, I think we, we need to do some work here. Because a lot of people don't know what this is saying and don't know what happens to their children when they're told that they can't be a part of this process after they actually went to the fair, or if they didn't go to the, the, the choice program fair. They tried to get their kid in, and then all of a sudden, they just got that letter saying, "You're no longer involved." And they have to call over here, trying to get somebody on the phone, or "Who do I talk to?" And people just don't know what to do. They're lost. And they're lost right now because we're right in the process of this. And I'm hearing the comments. So as I read all this wonderful words here, I don't know, you know, it seems like something needs to give here because we're missing things, especially on the criteria piece.
Ms. Whitfield?
Thank you. All right. So I think one of the problems that we're having here is we are a victim of our own success, right? So we created choice programs. Specifically in this case, I want to talk about the arts programs. People love our arts programs. They will kill to send their children to these arts programs. One of the concerns I have with Plomosa is that South County wants an arts program, have wanted it for a very, very long time. And I'm very concerned that we are not, just, just not listening to that, that outcry by putting only kids that were in the K-5 program into the K-8 program. Now, you can say that we're going to still have some choice spaces, but the reality is those choice spaces are going to be tiny. There's not going to be a lot of space for people in the South County to be able to go to an arts school. So right now, we have kids that are being put on a tri-rail in Boca and Delray to go all the way up to BAC for middle school because they love that program so much. So I think we have to think about what is the thing we're giving as an opportunity here? If I was a parent and I lived in that neighborhood, I might say, "Okay, well, I know I want to get my kids in arts, so I'm going to have to do it at kindergarten." And so the fight at Plomosa is going to start at kindergarten instead of sixth grade now. And then there's going to be no opportunities for people once they end up, you know, in sixth grade down there. They're just, I mean, you know how the fight to go to Don Estridge right now is unbelievable for that neighborhood? I would say the most calls that I get from families in my community are the South County, "How do you get me into Don Estridge?" conversations. And, and I, it's just very frustrating because I know that they want this. Now, I don't want to stop kids that live in that neighborhood from going there. I just don't want to only limit it. Because South County's been counting on this. They've been counting on getting their own BAC. That's what they've been wanting for this whole time. And I think it's too far to send a kid to North County from South County every day. That's just my personal opinion. Now, as far as, as Carver goes, I'm not saying... So if you look at Carver's boundaries right now, they're massive. I feel like what is happening with that school is less people want to go there. It's harder to convince people to go. And then the boundaries just became bigger and bigger and bigger. And so the, the boundaries for Carver are, are enormous, but it's not necessarily encouraging people in the door. So we have to realize, like, that's just reality. Carver is not a school that people are fighting to get into. And why not? It should be. So how do we, as a school district, fix that problem so that we don't have everyone in Carver's district trying their best to get into a different school? And this is not just a Carver problem. We have this at schools all over the county. This just happens to be the one that's most personal to me because it's one of my schools. So I think as we're talking about this, if we're talking about, you know, boundary changes, if we're talking about creating new school options, we have to realize that there are some schools that people just do not want to attend, and we have to tackle that head on. Because I, I think that would help us with, you know, children really going to a school because they care about the programming and not necessarily, "I'm just trying to avoid a different school." So they're taking training classes to go to, you know, be in the arts programs, even if they don't care about it, just to show up because that's the school they want to attend. So I, I'm just trying to have the honest conversations that I think we have to have around choice. And I, I am the first person to say, "I do not have a solution for this." I think this is terribly difficult. And I think we need to, as a board, discuss the difficultness of this. Because what the reality is, is that when we don't provide what people are looking for, they just leave and they go to a private school, or they go to a charter school. And I don't want to see that. I want them to all to come at us because we have the best product. And that's what I want them to do. That's my, that's my story. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
So I would like Ms. Brill to go first, since we were in that order before.
All right. And I have, I'm Ms. McQuinn, and Ms. Andrews also to raise her hands now. So you still want to stay after Ms. Brill? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Brill.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your efforts, because I didn't do that before. And I do appreciate them. I, I do want to comment on what Ms. Whitfield was talking about with Plomosa. And as she was speaking, I'm thinking that maybe we also need to look at what our enrollments are at our different schools. Because we've talked about this before. We spoke at one point about making, there was talk a long time ago about Odyssey being an art school. Then it was Boynton Beach High School being an art school. But, you know, the South area's been crying out to have something similar to Suncoast. I even threw that out to be something that we could do at Boynton High to, you know, something that we could do to recreate it. Also, you know, we talked about, I know Plomosa's a wonderful school, but it's not the answer to having a middle school and a high school of the arts in the South area. They can't accommodate the students. So if they go through K-8, then what? Then it's just Dreyfus. So we really do need to look at the enrollments and what, what would get the students to attend. We keep talking about it. We're not getting there. But to Dr. Fanoi, when it comes to the K-8, I think the lesson here is that we can't just transition a school into K-8 unless there's capacity for those young children who are in attendance there to continue at that school. So if we're looking to build new K-8s, this is one of the reasons that I was not supportive when the thought came out about Sunset Palms, the new school, being a K-8 instead of a middle school. Because you wouldn't have the capacity for the students that are in that area to attend the school. So I think before we jump into transitioning schools into K-8, or if we're looking for new schools, or to reconfigure schools, we are giving direction that we expect the young ones to be able to continue. I think that, that's overall the, the answer that, you know, the, the direction we're giving. But to Mrs. Whitfield's point, we need to find a way to satisfy the hunger for schools in the South like a Suncoast, like a Dreyfus, and like a BAC. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, you know, it's interesting, we're having this conversation, we recently had this equity conversation, because choice is where inequity lives, right? And in, in those procedures. And it's just, and I get people are, are trying to do their best. But that, that's where it is, right? And so let's be clear what people are saying. So, and let's look at the numbers. I mean, just look at the numbers. I mean, just look at the numbers. People are not choosing to go to poor black schools and poor brown schools, right? And i- if you look at the history, since I mentioned OCR before, so when we had the agreement with the Office of Civil Rights, it required that, um, we had between 15, I think it was 15 and 35% um, minority, right? And they were going to try to do that with force busing. So, and those numbers come from someplace, right? And so, I mean, if we're going to have honest conversation, let's have it. So, because basically if it's, if it's more than that, then those who have advantage will consider it to be not good, unsafe, whatever, right? Which is, which is why I always have to lift up, um, all the examples of black excellence since people in their minds, um, don't do it. But that's why people are not going to Carver, right? And so my thing though is instead of acting like that is a problem, can we educate the children that are there? Can we give them the most outstanding curriculum and support and programming? And if others come, let them come, right? But, but this is what we do as a district. We work to attract white students, right? And we act as though white students are born with level three, four and five test scores and will forever had those scores no matter what we do. And black children are born with level one and two scores and will forever had those scores no matter what we do. We need to stop acting like that, right? Now, we don't say that and, you know, and how dare I sit here and say these things? Yeah, but that's my truth, right? And I remember years ago in, in arguing some of these things with OCR, you know, somebody said to me, what we're actually doing is we're magnetizing to attract white students and repel black students, right? That's what we're doing and we continue to do it, but we just don't say it, right? Anyway, so I'm going to get back to my talking points because I, but I just need some honesty up in here. I just need people to see if, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but I'm not going to, um, I'm not going to be quiet and, and especially since we've been having these conversations about equity, right? I knew before that boards that I sat up here with in the past could not hear this, right? Since we're having these conversations about equity, I'm, I'm just going to give you more of my worldview in hopes that you will understand, in hopes that we will actually work for equity, right? Okay, I'm going to come back to my notes. So, so I have at the top of this, when will we have the workshop that shows the inequities in this system, right? So the in-house and the out-house, I'm sorry, I like to say it that way. Okay. The transportation zone. So I'm still waiting for the entire board to be able to see that little mapping system so you can click and say, okay, let's say middle school arts programs and who has a transportation zone. So if you live here or there, you can't go unless somebody provides transportation. I'm hoping, hoping that we'll look at that. I hope that sooner or later we will look at the curriculum and staffing, the funding related things. I, I understand how this happened. I understand how years ago we had the Magnet School of America grant and that, that funded the startup of a lot of our magnet programs and the other people said, I want that too. And we said, well, we don't have money for it, so you're going to have to do it on a shoestring or find your own money. And they said, okay, I'll do it. I understand how that happened, but now that we're talking equity, let's put all the inequities on the table. So I want to talk about these doggone auditions. I'm going to go back to the manual, but I'm going to talk about these auditions, right? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to point, point. But, um, we're going, we have to figure out how to remove as much bias as possible from these auditions. So we have talked about the adjudicators, we have talked about my request that we essentially outline the criteria to be an adjudicator. Well, my husband, who was a musician who traveled the country playing music before he went to med school, would he qualify or not, right? And it's not enough to say, well, send the resume to the school and they'll pick and choose. No. We need to outline the cri- because we have artists in our community who would be happy, right, to act as adjudicators. It, it is like, everybody I know knows that there are inequities in this audition process. And then I get the email from the poster child. So a child who dances with a national ballet company, the Joffrey Ballet, now I'm not a, you know, I don't, but a national ballet company, she dances with them, but she couldn't pass the Dreyfus audition? Hmm. I, it, it smells funny to me, okay? So happens that she's black. I don't know, did they take away those points? I, like, then there was the other issue that they did the virtual, right? So let me throw this in because it's really interesting how inequities happen. Nobody's set up to create inequity, I don't think, right? So they're probably trying to do a good thing. So they said, if you're going to do a, uh, dance audition, the room that you're in, and it's going to be virtual, the room that you're in needs to be a certain size, 20 by 20, I don't remember what it was. So it just so happened this young lady, her living room wasn't that large. So mom said, excuse me, school, my living room is not that large. They said, fine, bring her to the school, we'll put her in the classroom, have her dance in the classroom. But the, the adjudicators are still virtual, watching her from a distance, right? Oh, but then she just got marked because now, not only is she black and, and dancing for the Joffrey Ballet, she's also poor because her living room is not big enough. So that's a proxy for poor. Her dad's one of our teachers, I guess, yeah, they're poor, okay? So I'm just saying, we need to look at this. And so, I don't know, I guess I'm just hopeful since we're having these equity conversations that we mean it. I'm going to go back to the, the manual, I'm going to do a few more, I'm going to save some more to my third go-round because I have a lot. And I've discussed, um, these actually with our Choice Program leadership here. So if you go to line 207 in the manual, it says by February 1st, the principal shall, shall submit any newly proposed or changed eligibility criteria for the next school year. I think for clarity, we should change that to the next choice cycle, okay? Um, then I'm going to move to line 292. So this is the one with the audition and baby got sick on her audition day or his audition day and they have a doctor's note. And so we're really clear that we'll reschedule the audition only if the school has more audition dates available. So I'm not really sure where we philosophically landed with that, but I would think that if, they always have makeup days and so if this is in the first set of audition days, then there should be audition, uh, makeup days available. So we should be able to say that. Now, if somehow baby got sick during the first audition and then got sick for the second, the makeup, I, I can understand that we're not, you know, recreating everything, but can we clean that up, please? To be more student-centered because everybody gets sick now and then. Okay. I'm going to skip that one. All right. Um, so let me just go to the end. I'm actually skipping some of this. I do think that we need to actually have a five, uh, Choice Five-Year Plan as outlined in our policy. Now, I want to point out on page 12, so this is part of the priority. So we did the principals 20%, then we have the employee, then we had a military, great. And so then we outline the IB continuum and the FAU biomedical sciences continuum. So, and, and that's awesome because I, I got a real clear answer when I asked the question. So let's imagine you're at Carver Middle School and let's imagine there's 40 kids at Carver Middle School who com- did the middle years IB and met the criteria for Atlantic. All 40 of them get in Atlantic. It's not like a, well, a maybe or we throw you an additional lottery or we give you preference points. They get in, right? That's how it should be. That's what I think that we imagine when we talk about strands, right? Like the kids get to go from one level to the next. We had the same kind of language for the FAU biomedical sciences continuum. Now, this is a challenge I want us to, as a board, to put on our equity table. Why don't we have similar language for the arts continuum? Okay? Because we don't. So if you go to U.B. Kinsey and you apply to BAC and you pass the audition, you just, you're in the lottery, you get that strand preference, right? But you don't just get in. And, you know, BAC was part of the, um, trauma that I had to deal with as a community member that led me to run off a school board. And so I'm really like intimately familiar with how the story changed. And so when Dreyfus opened, when they separated the campus that is now BAC and they separated it into middle and high school, the parents in the middle school thought that their children, if they passed the audition, would get to go to Dreyfus. That doesn't happen, okay? And so I'm, I'm just saying, so we with arts, because it is very popular, I think that we make a very conscious effort to make sure those who have, um, voice, agency and, and advantage, that they get in. And I'm saying, if we're going to talk about equity, let's talk about equity. So we need to talk about equity in the arts program. I would love to see how we can figure it out to have the children in the arts continuum have the same right to attend the next level, assuming they pass the audition. It's shame on us if they don't, right? But that they had a right to attend the next level up. Because I, I think that was, well, I know it was a bait and switch because I was, I was there listening to it. So I'll hold, I've got a few more, but I'll wait.
Okay, board members, let me make a suggestion because I know that district staff is writing all this stuff down. Some of you obviously don't agree with others because we've already heard that from a couple of you. So, um, you are writing down the changes at the board. So at the end of this, we're going to go through, you're going to read the list off to us. I just asked the superintendent if this was okay with him so that the board members can each weigh in. So, because I don't know how you're going to bring back a revised policy. Forget about the K-8s because I know we're going to have a separate workshop on that, but on the, all this other stuff, I can't imagine how you're going to bring back a revised policy when you have board members who want different things that are contradicting other board members. So if you just be prepared at the end to read back all the changes, one, we'll go through one at a time and see if, if you've got a consensus on the board to make that change before you do it, all right? All right. The next speaker is Ms. McQuinn and then Mrs. Andrews and Ms. Whitfield.
First, I do want to thank you very much for the formatting regarding substantive changes. That was great. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
My comment really will be elaborated upon more when we have our next equity workshop. I think that's next week. Yeah? And I alluded to this before, so please understand that I'm not asking at all that schools not have in-house academies. But it's going to come down to a funding issue as we address equity. And while I hesitate to bring up a specific school's name, since we've already done that with a couple of schools, I'm going to do it. In North County, we have Howell L. Watkins Middle School. I happened, I just Googled, well, I didn't want to come out of this screen, so I just Googled the demographics for Howell Watkins from 2019. And it was 666 black students, very specifically what it says there is African-American and 60 white students. That's 666 and 60. Now, this has been occurring since I left Gardens High School, which was well over 20 years ago. White students don't go to Howell Watkins Middle School. And the point I want to make here is that Howell Watkins has an MSAP grant, Magnet Schools Assistant Program, I think that's what it is, grant to have a pre-med, um, I, I'm going to call it an academy, a pre-med program. They've hired great teachers, I've observed the kids pre-COVID. It's amazing. And yet our white students won't go to Howell Watkins. And the students primarily come from Riviera Beach and it's wonderful. Now, let's talk about why they leave Riviera Beach and won't go to, um, the other school in Riviera Beach that suffers the same reputation. But my point being that we have two other schools, two other middle schools in North County who, one of which has some, um, they are more diverse in terms of race than the other, but both have pre-med programs, academies, the same that we have at Howell Watkins. So I will be bringing up when we get to the equity workshop, I have no problem at all with the other two schools having their pre-med programs. But I think as a school board, we should not be agreeing that they get more monies for those students, for those academies. They figure it out with their own budgets. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. Two things, uh, going back to the dual language programs, uh, we've got a lot of work to do there. I'm just, uh, concerned that we have GOV that's been sitting out there in the Glades region for all these years. I keep asking where is going to be the feeder pattern for those children leaving Gold Valley, Illinois. And I keep getting a little pushback because nobody says what's going to happen. Can they, do we have a program at Lakeshore? Are they going to be able to, uh, feed into Glade Central? It just stops there. And all that wonderful instruction that the district has done just stops. Uh, and that's a problem. Same thing for, uh, New Horizons, uh, as well as the kids have to leave the neighborhood and go over to Okaheely. And I don't understand why we can't have a feeder pattern with one of the middle schools. Uh, Polo Park, I keep asking and somebody says, oh yeah, that's going to happen, but that's been about a couple of years and nothing's happened there. And when we look at, uh, our dual language programs and look at Palm Beach County, I mean, we are heavy-duty dual language in the sense of this whole county here and we need to do better. And, uh, and we are missing the boat here. I do appreciate all the work that you all are doing, but these are the same concerns I've had before. That's why when I read this, this, uh, policy, it's, it sounds great, but when I look at what's really happening out on the ground, it's not the same thing. And when we talk about equity and dismantled is the word that we used a few weeks ago, you're going to have to dismantle a whole lot of stuff so that we can get to the children who truly need it. Because when I look at, at sentence 315 in recruitment, it says, in order to ensure that all students have equitable educational opportunities to promote diverse choice in school enrollment, the superintendent and designated staff shall ensure that recruitment strategies are developed by each school, a program, and each, the students for them to be able to have a diverse program. And I know I drive around and look at a lot of different schools and I'm in quite a few in District Six and I don't see that. And so I'm concerned that we've been doing it this way for so long and yes, I thank you, Dr. Johnson and, and, uh, everybody for actually making the, uh, the new guidelines for us so we can understand that they're going to have a little bit more information, but we need to kind of educate parents a lot. Those parents are those students who never get a chance to be in a Choice Program. This is what I'm talking about. When we look at why we haven't made the, our goals as it relates to our strategic plan, it's that group of kids that we're talking about that's not in our Choice Program that we're missing. And so we've got the final way for recruitment and eligibility is what I was talking about earlier, the final way that there's some way we're going to be able to reach out to some of these ELL students, uh, ESE students, uh, and some of the, uh, uh, black schools where we know we don't have the things that we need. We don't have the programs there, not even school center programs, don't even talk about the Choice Programs. Because guess what? The first thing I had the problem with is some of the children wanted to go to a, a program over at Crestwood and it came up, we can't get the bus. Nope, there's no way and they had to be sent back home, okay? So I've been going through this and as I read this, it looks like we're equitable and we're going to do all these great things, but we're missing a big chunk of children and their parents. Because once they've been just kind of singled out that they're not going to have an opportunity in this process for Choice, they're just on a regular track. And I have to cite Emma Banks over at Inlet Grove. Every child that graduates from Inlet Grove graduates with a, a, a certification, a diploma and ready for college or career. And so I don't know what we have to do to dismantle this, to make sure that in each one of our schools, if they, if you're not going to be able to transfer people from over to the Glades or from Wellington to the Glades to get in West Tech or whatever, we need to find a way that we don't miss a certain portion of our children and they can't get in. Because guess what? They don't meet the, uh, audition requirements, they don't meet the GPA, they don't meet all of these things. And these are the kids we're talking about, the last five years, we kind of didn't move them, okay? And so if we're going to be able to move all of our children and we're equitable and doing the things that we say we're going to do, we need a component of this policy that's going to identify how we can address some of these other children that made it to the process, got into Choice, but for the others that are just sitting there at the school, doing maybe a basic program and may graduate, may not graduate and may not be college or career ready. So I don't see that in any of... So I don't see that in any of my reading here for that group of children. And I have to talk about the Glades Region. I've been pushing hard to get West Tech open so we can have more programs, so we can pull some kids from Wellington and Royal Palm Beach over there to be in a program. Many of them couldn't make it. They couldn't make the criteria for this. They couldn't get recruited for whatever the schools had, Park Vista, the Automotive Academy and all these kinds of things. They couldn't meet all of these things. But we need to have enough programs in a district, the 10th largest district with a 3-plus billion-dollar budget to be able to help all these children that still left behind. I love reading the policy and I appreciate you all putting it together, but I'm still wondering about what's gonna happen to all these children that can't fit into this pocket of stuff that you're talking about in the policy. So there almost needs to be something else for them because this certainly doesn't reach them.
Ms. Whitfield and Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So I just want to be really clear. This is the thing that frustrates me the most about this district. I think we as a board have been handed a racist system. We got handed it, and I thought, I've said this before, I thought we could fix it. And it is very, very difficult to fix. And the reason that I think it's so difficult is because when we did our, our equity workshop a little while ago, we went through and I, the thing that I was like, okay, what, you know, what is the, the biggest issue? And I would talk about choice. And then it was like, well, why do you think that is? Why do you think that is? Why do you think that is? And you just keep going down. And I finally got to a point where I was like, I guess the reason that we do this is because in the end, it's just easier to give people what they want rather than, than to try to fix it. Because we know it's wrong, but it's easier to just say yes to people. And so this is, I think this is a super big frustration because, because we codify this every year. We, we, we do it through, you know, the, the way that we allow this to continue to go on. So, two things. One, I think when we talk K-8, we have got to talk about the after-school activities. We have to talk about the things that kids are not getting at K eights when they go to a K-8. So if you go to a comprehensive middle school, you get free after-school. You do not get that in a K-8 program. Your K-8 program, you have to pay just like an elementary kid if you want your after-school. Because we have a grant that says that everybody that's in a middle school program gets after-school for free, and it doesn't count any of the K eights. So we have to talk about that because that is just completely inequity. And it's silly to try to sell K eights to people and say, oh, now that you came here, you have to pay for something that people at a comprehensive school don't have to. We have to talk about sports programs, volleyball, soccer, baseball, basketball, whatever we're offering. I know my daughter's involved in like student council that's really good. And I know that at North Grade, my K-8 that's in my neighborhood, they don't have anything after-school. There's nothing you can participate in as a middle schooler except for to go to an after-school program that you have to pay for. And so I think when we start talking about creating all these programs, we have to realize that the funding is not necessarily there to create the same experience at a K-8 that you're gonna get at a comprehensive school. And some people might be sad to find that out when they get there. So I think we have to talk about that. The other thing I think we have to talk about is, so we're talking about Plomosa not having enough seats to be the South County School of the Arts. But I'm telling you, Carver down the street has plenty of seats. So why is it we're not thinking about building space? I know we're building a new space at, at Plomosa, but like, we know that South County wants an arts school. They have been begging for it. When we did the referendum and I went down there to go talk to the parents, that was the thing that they really said was, where is our South County Arts Program? And I think it would take the burden off of Don Estridge if you had a, a program down there. I think it would take the burden off of our Tri-Rail dollars that we do not have to continue to send kids on a, on a train because they like that better than a bus. So I think we have to be thinking, if this is what the South County wants and needs, and we don't have enough space for it, why don't we reimagine what it is that we need down there? Because right now, we're trying to shove this square peg in this round hole. And, and I did want to ask, how many kids can we fit in the after, in the, in the K, in the, sorry, in the 6th through 8th program at Plomosa? Like, how many, how many kids are able to actually fit in there when we're done with this construction? Do you know? Anybody know that?
I would have to look it up, but...
I'm, I'm just thinking like, if it's not enough, I know we have a, there's a want and a need for it, right? So if we don't have that kind of space, why aren't we reimagining with the buildings that we have or, you know, I mean, I, I know that I don't want to throw a whole wrench in the works right now, but I do think we have to think about what the needs and the wants of the community are. And they want a South County art program. They've wanted it forever. And I don't want to like perpetuate racism, but I do want people to stay at the Palm Beach County school system. So like, let's, let's try to make it so that we create the programs that, that they need and the spaces that can accommodate the number of kids that are actually trying to go there.
Dr. Robinson, then Mrs. Andrews?
Okay, thank you. So first, I have a question. For the K-8 schools, do, do the 6-8s have boundaries in any of them?
No, they're, they're choice.
Okay. Okay, no, I was just making sure because I didn't, it didn't click in my head why we need to have a conversation about changing boundaries.
They don't have boundaries.
Okay, alright.
And that language is constructed around that, that piece of it. So the, the 6-8 is the choice option.
Right.
That's why we're having to utilize that mechanism to have the students stay within that school.
Correct. Okay. So let me just finish with my manual, then I go back to a couple of other things. So line 571. So this is a K-8. If there are enough seats at the school. I think it should say, if there are enough 6th grade seats at the school, comma, the students who have attended the school for grades four and five. So, I mean, we can debate whether or not you want that to happen because I'm not quite sure if I'm hearing everybody wants that to happen, but, but the language needs to be cleaned up. Okay, so, and, um, then, so let me just go to a bigger issue. So, and so I hear you, Ms. Whitfield. It's going to be, um, it's gonna be very difficult to, to remove the racism from this choice program because it was built on it. But, um, anyway, but let's go for it. Let's try, right? So, one, I think that we need to do an analysis of the choice programs, right? Like, what, what do we call a successful choice program? Now, I'm gonna tell you, and you know I'm gonna say it. The Conservatory School is successful. And so no matter what the original agreement was, it, it, it's just like the schools of the arts. If they're successful, people want them. That's what, one of my measures of success for a choice program is if people want them. You know, then we can look at academic gains and so forth. Those would be mine. But if they want them, then to the point, it seems that we should create them. And if they don't want them, then maybe we don't need to continue to offer them, right? There, there's always been like, you know, the place catch on fire when you start talking about eliminating programs. But, but I think that we need to have an honest conversation, right? And so, um, you know, I think that we need to have arts available to every student in every school. But I have no problem with expanding arts programs. I mean, we added the arts program at Boynton. But see, what people will say, and let's just be honest, what they want is 100% choice school because then you know that the only kids going there are the kids who have adults in their lives who are paying that much of attention to the system to apply eight months ahead of gra, uh, uh, eight months ahead of time, which means you're selecting out some people, right? Like those people, you know, those people are not applying, right? And so, you know, I vowed to myself and probably others that I would never support another 100% choice school. But I do think that we need to look at the big picture. I think, I'm gonna pull, there's a report some years ago called State of the Arts that talked about why we need to have arts programming in all schools. But I also agree that it's a lure for kids to have the specialty. And then the other thing we have to accept is that all the kids going to Dreyfus are not going to make a living in their art form. Many of them go into other areas. But, but the attraction with many of these schools is the selectivity. And let's, so let's be honest about that, right? So I think that we need to talk about what does success look like. We need to measure whatever those metrics for success are against our current choice programs. And then talk about, well then, what programs do we wean off and what programs do we build, right? Now, um, you know, the, I'm gonna add this, and then I think I'm actually gonna try to be quiet for a minute, but, well, thank you for pointing out the, that you had to pay for after-school in a middle school program for K-8. I wasn't aware of that, so. But this is the thing. So I know the city of Delray, there are people who are influential in the city of Delray who want to create another all-choice school, right? Those are probably the people, I, no, I don't know. Some people, when they say South County, that's the people they're talking about. I want to tell you, Plomosa and that neighborhood, that's in South County too, right? So they count for South County. But anyway, so, uh, the, my problem is that nobody, not nobody, we don't have enough emphasis on making sure we're doing right by the least of us. And we will recreate all kinds of things to attract more people with advantage. And that bugs the living daylights out of me. If we do right by the least of us, I'm good with creating some more, attracting the advantaged people back. I'm, I, I'm not trying to push them away, but can we please educate and support and develop and nurture the kids that we have in those schools that people don't want to go to? Because somehow we manage to not do that year af, after year. And it's a heavy lift sometimes. I understand that. But that's where the equity comes in. So now we're talking about equity, maybe we'll actually put the kinds of resources that they need there so that I can shut up talking about educating the children that are there. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews, then Ms. McQuinn?
Yes, and this will probably be my last statement. You know, the middle, central region needs the arts too. I mean, it's needed everywhere. I hear you all talking about, you know, Dreyfus and, and BACH and, and all these other places. I must say that I compliment the, many of the schools in the central western region. I was just over the Wellington Landings. They have an arts program there. We can't even get a stage built. That's something I'm gonna be talking to Wanda Paul about. I've already mentioned it to Dr. Fanoi. But when I go out to the schools, you know, Wellington Elementary has a wonderful arts program. And all of those children want to continue in the arts, but guess what? They're not gonna all get a chance to go to BACH or go to, to Dreyfus. So we've got to really strengthen our schools within our communities and make them of such a level that the children will want to stay right there where they are. And I see that a lot of that work is being done in the western central schools, but they still need some help, especially facility-wise, especially at the Wellington Landings middle school and even at the elementary school over at Wellington. And then out in the acreage, they just do their own things so that they can kind of make do. And then when the kids truly want to get out, they can't make it there. And so I just want us to do this, and Dr. Robinson, you hit on it a little bit. I want to see, and I know we're in the process right now, I want to see the numbers. And I want to see what it looks like in Palm Beach County. Because when we keep saying that we're doing equity and equality and everybody's working together to give all these children, all Palm Beach County children, an opportunity to participate, we need to see the chart that shows us just who's participating, what they look like and feel like. We need to see about, to see their success level because maybe they all have high-level GPAs. I keep talking about that. And the ones that's sitting there that may have less, a lesser GPA, they can't get anything. You know what I'm saying? These are the ones that we're just leaving behind. So if we're talking about we're so great in choice, we need to be having something, a choice for all of our children. So whether they go to BACH or Dreyfus or anywhere else, we know that there's a cadre of children in each one of our schools that we're leaving behind. So when I look at policy, this policy and at 511 where the principals have 20% that they can pick, which is optional, I don't know who truly talks about that and how well that's actually managed. Some of the parents don't know about that. Sometimes I tell them, you know, you can call the principal because the principal does have some options too in this process. I just see so many hungry parents wanting to put their children in all these programs. And then they turn to the board member saying, well, what is, what's going on here? Why can't my child have a, have a shot? And so that's why we're gonna have to figure this out. This is great for what you have right now in this policy, for what we already do. It's obvious we've got to do something different here in Palm Beach County. We've been sitting in these workshops for the last few weeks saying that we've got to dismantle and disrupt some of the things that we're doing so that we can meet the needs of all the children who are being left behind. And so that's why when I read the policy, I think you fine-tuned it a bit. You need to probably have more parent participation, especially those parents that truly don't have a voice and don't know where to turn. Those that kind of know it, they've got it. They still probably need some support. But for those people that really don't have choices and don't know what their children can be about through this choice program, we need to educate them so we can get better participation. And for those that may not meet our recruitment and, and our auditions and the processes that's established here, we need to have another, another kind of process in place to pick those other children up and carry them along. So when they graduate from high school, they're gonna be college and career-ready. And they didn't have to go to a, a Dreyfus or Suncoast because guess what? Their school took care of them by meeting their needs.
Mrs. McQuinn?
I'm going to use a specific example again, but I assure you, this is theoretical. We have to look at it. So we have agreed as a board pre-COVID that project-based learning, which is at the core of the Conservatory School at North Palm Beach, is desirable. And we would love to see that even at the high school level. And we've had talks about lab school, et cetera. But I'm gonna remind us that the Conservatory School, actually pre-K through 5 is for students who live, who are assigned by boundary to the school. And then they audition for the music grade 6-8. And thank you for nodding because I don't want to make a mistake here. So again, again, theoretical because we need to look at this district-wide. It's overcrowded. So you continue the project-based at grades pre-K 5. And you take that music program, put it at Howell Watkins where there's room. And I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm suggesting that if we do, they won't come to Howell Watkins. So we have a much deeper issue. Thank you. Yeah, one, one more thing. And the middle school music program, which is by audition, is where, going back to Dr. Robinson's, talk about what success, we're talking about academic success. Yet it is those students who come by application that bring the school's grades up. So again, you have to look at everything. Thank you.
Ms. Ayala?
Thank you. I, I want to thank Mr. Bajis for your help this morning with what we discussed. And I actually did put in a data request that's gonna hopefully show the choice program audition and participation broken down by demographics. So all of you will see that because I was curious too. It's my first go-around with how contentious this time period goes. So it's been an interesting couple of weeks as notices come out. Some happy, some not so happy. But I had a few questions I wanted to ask of all of you. My first one was, I, obviously, there's a lot of language about our dual-language programs, which are a soft spot in my heart, and I hope to see expanded over the next five to 10 years. How does the language that you have in here to propose changes help us establish better dual-language pipelines for elementary, middle, and high so that we make sure that we can have continuous language immersion for the students who want to do that? Because I saw language about those who don't want to can opt out of their schools. But I'm curious how this aligns with any goals we have for making sure that academically the pipelines can be in place so that students can have that option throughout their schooling.
So one of the things that we do working alongside our multicultural department, because they actually own the curriculum when it comes to the dual-language programs, we work very closely with them in terms of making sure that when we find the gaps in terms of feeder pattern, that we look to, to fill those gaps. And so that's one of the things that we are continuing to work on. And as Mrs. Andrews said, you know, there's obviously some gaps in her area. But, you know, whether it's a dual-language at the middle and high school level, there are other, are other options from the multicultural department that can work with the students to continue that language continuum. So we just continue to work with our multicultural department to fill whatever gaps there, might be there. Whether it's an actual dual-language program or they transition as they get older into a global language
or they transition as they get older into a global language sequence of courses so that they can continue that language, we look to do that.
Thank you. And there are some in my district as well, which is why I bring that up. And I appreciate that that's on front of mind, because parents don't always know to go to our multicultural office to ask for how their student can have that option. So if it doesn't exist, they may just say, it's not that important for you to remain in the program. And I don't want to see that happen because of addresses, boundary changes, or whatever comes in the future. So filling those gaps anywhere, I just wanted to make sure that was thought of when this language was put in there. Second question I had was the, kind of something that's been going in my mind the last two weeks of this process is, and it's not a question that may have a direct answer, but I just want to put it in front of everyone's mind. Especially with COVID this year, it's been really stressful for students, this whole process, and for families where they felt isolated. And this period, there's a lot of pressure and expectation, and everyone wants the golden ticket. And I just worry about students' mental health and well-being as they endure things similar to, you know, I didn't get into Harvard and it's my dream school. And so I just wanted to put that out there, because I've gotten some calls with some students who are going through really difficult emotional times. Just, I know you all take care of that, and I've been really pleased with how you've taken care of anyone who's come to me, and you've handled them very well. But it's just something that, when we have this whole conversation about equity, there are advantages that we know exist for how students can get into certain programs that other families don't have. And when it comes down to that, balancing the emotional understanding as well as the procedural is really important for when we're writing policy like this, so that people don't feel like it's, you know, cutthroat out there. This is, it's schooling. We have incredible schools all over the district, and so making sure we highlight that and make people feel supported is a really good thing. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Other comments, board members?
I have a couple of questions. I guess with respect to this policy, we're going to give you some, we're going to go through what the changes that, but it won't include the K8s, I would imagine, at this point, because you're going to schedule, Mr. Superintendent, a separate workshop on the K8. So that's fine. But my question on the K8, just so you have it, is I didn't see in here that if a student's at a K8 and there's athletics or other things that aren't available, that they can go back to their school that they're boundaried for, for middle school, in order to participate? Maybe it was in here and I missed it, but. And also, someone mentioned that the after-school program is free for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders at a middle school. I wasn't aware of how much they pay, but it's not available if you're in a K8. So possibly they would be able to do the same thing, go over to the, to the middle school they're boundaried for, for all the programs that they can't get in their K8? I mean, we need to take a look at that and be prepared to discuss it, I guess, at the K8 workshop.
The after-school program would be an interesting challenge, because you'd have to have transportation to go from the K8 to the middle school. And just for the rest of the board to know, the reason why they don't get that free service is because technically a K8 is an elementary school. So those grants are only for middle schools. And I think, I've only known one large school system in the country, Chicago, does not have middle schools. It is K8 elementary schools and high school only.
The other question I have is if a parent, so I think I see the fix on it, but a parent, two parents are divorced, they have 50-50 custody. Only one address is in SIS. If the child wants to go to a school where, the address is for mom. The child wants to go to a school that's in dad's area. So all they have to do is they have to change before the lottery deadline. They have to change their primary address from mom to dad? And that's going to satisfy the choice programming? Yes?
Well, it's the custodial parent.
It's the custodial parent.
But I can tell you that there's some situations where there is no custodial parent, that the children spend one week at mom's house and one week at dad's house. And they go back and forth, that they spend two weeks here and two weeks there. So there is no primary custodial parent in that case, so I guess we just.
We will work with legal on, we will work with legal on addressing that piece, I think what you're saying.
Okay, okay. And I guess the only, I don't remember what the other question was. I scribbled so many things down here, I can't find it at this point. But, oh, on the K8 program, I understand, I understand that we don't want children to have to go through a lottery to stay at a school, I get it. But I guess the reality is, we don't have enough space. I mean, I know in Addison Meisner and Verdi Elementary, I guess we're okay this year. I heard that at Addison Meisner, we're three seats short, and those kids will probably get in, because somebody that wanted to stay will go to Don Estridge or someplace else. But, I mean, I don't know how you fix that. I mean, we only have so many classrooms, and if there's, you know, 300 5th graders and there's only room for 200 6th graders, somebody doesn't go. So I don't know, I guess at the workshop, you're going to come up with some ideas, and maybe Ms. Paul can give us ideas on where we're going to get the money to add more classrooms or concretables or something to make sure that every 5th grader can stay there? Because right now, that's not the reality in the schools that we're building. There's just not enough room for every 5th grader to stay. And the hope is that some of those 5th graders are not going to want to stay. They're going to want to go back to their home school because of sports, or they want to go to Don Estridge, or they want to go to Bach or somewhere else in the district so that they'll make room for the kids that want to stay. But I mean, that's a reality that I don't know how we're going to fix without building more classrooms and finding the money to do that at those schools. But anyway, that's something you should probably put on your radar, yes?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, that is the reality that we are facing. The language proposed was the best thinking of this choice team on how we could work with current language and not have boundary changes. Given the opportunity to the attendance zone and then grades 4 and 5, that they would then matriculate on through. Truth of the matter is, families and students, they vote with their feet, where they want to go, whether that's the program, whether that's the school. And in doing so, our K8s are, in many instances, the conservatory is overcrowded. Students and families are wanting to go there due to project-based learning, due to the music program, due to a variety of things. And in doing so, the capacity just isn't there.
My other thought is maybe the arts schools should have a different policy provisions than the other K8s, for the reason some of my colleagues suggested that if you keep all the kids at an art school that, to start there in kindergarten, then there is absolutely no room for, probably going to be no room, or very limited amount of room for any out-of-boundary students to come there. So maybe there should be a separate policy to address, to make sure that every child that's got art, you know, talents is able to at least apply there and get a fair chance of getting in, rather than saying there's no seats, there's just not going to be any seats, because there's more 5th graders than there are 6th grade seats available. So possibly, we need to have separate policy for art schools as opposed to the regular K8s, the other K8s. Dr. Robinson?
So if we want to go school by school, we can do that. But like I said, Plomosa, we finally got it right. Where we have, we built it to have more 6th grade seats than 5th grade seats. Now, we could argue about what you think that the balance of, you know, current 5th graders versus out-of-boundary kids would be. But I don't want to set up another disparity. So we already have the disparity, and it's a lot of disparity in arts, right? In our arts programming. So we already don't have any feeder pattern, for example, from UBK to Bach, the way it exists for, like, the FAU biomedical program and the middle year's IB, right? So, I mean, let's just put it all on the table, because we're either going to work towards equity in all the areas, or we're going to knowingly outline exceptions, right? We're going to knowingly say, well, not in the arts, we don't need to work on the equity there, right? But I'm just telling you, for once, we did the planning right. Like, I missed it with the K8s in your area. We didn't build enough, it large enough to have the 5th grade, all the 5th graders be able to stay, right? But again, I am really clear that when we say it's a K8, when baby starts there in kindergarten, first, second, whatever, that they expect to stay through 8th grade. And that's, that's our poor planning. We should not make children suffer because we did not plan properly. But please don't start talking about some alternate pathway for arts that will allow some people to continue to have advantage and other children to be discarded in favor of those that we traditionally listen to.
But Dr. Robinson, what if we have minority students that want to get into the school in 5th or 6th grade, and we say there's no seats? I mean, it's not just, let's not just assume that we're just going to attract white kids, they're going to push out black kids. It's like, we may have black kids out there that have no chance of getting in them, because they weren't there in kindergarten, and now they can never get in to that school for the arts programs there, because they didn't start there in kindergarten. So it works for all children. I understand that, you know, that the children that are, you know, more economically advantaged might have transportation to get there and those kind of things, so they start there in kindergarten, whatever. But I just want to make sure that we don't cheat any kids from being able to get into an art school, because we're saying, you know, there's just no seats available for you. So you can't get into that middle school, that 6th grade, because there's no seat. Whether you're black, white, or brown, there's no seats available and you can't get in.
Okay, so here's the reality. So the situation we're talking about, I'm going to name Plomosa, because that's the one that I'm fighting about, where we did it right with the facility, and we're now talking about doing it wrong, in my opinion, with the policy. So I'm going to stick with that one, right? So I get that we need to create more art seats in South County. That's fine. We need to create more art seats in the Midwest, and how about in the Glades? Okay, I'm just saying, everybody loves the arts. And if, if we do an analysis of our choice programs and find that arts are the thing, bam, that's where we hang our money, right? If that's it, then that's what we do, right? Instead of trying to mess up what was finally done right with the facilities to make sure that those who we normally listen to get advantage, and it will be at the expense of the children who are there. And so it so happens that the children that are at Plomosa K5 are overwhelmingly black and brown. Just so happens, right? If it was Verdi or one of the other K8s in your area, I would say the same thing. We're baiting and switching those parents too, right? Unfortunately, we did not plan the facilities the way we should have, in my opinion. But we did it at Plomosa. So let's not mess this up just because the kids already go there and it's somebody else that wants arts. At this point in time, I don't, we do not have the capacity to meet all the desires of everybody who wants arts. So if that's what we're going to say we're going to do, then let's do that. But not at the expense of some other child, okay? I'm not, no, uh-uh, no.
Okay, that's fair. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. And so this isn't going to be that popular, but again, I agree with Dr. Robinson. It's our facilities that are, facilities weren't structured to accommodate the numbers. So we've got to fix it. Whether it means concretables, I saw the answer about extra concretables that we have. And then as we move forward, you know, what they say about hindsight, as we move forward, as we rebuild our schools, if we're thinking of that concept, lessons learned, I think we've all heard it, that we've got to make sure we make the seats to accommodate them. And that's really what I, where I was coming from in saying, I want those little ones to be able to continue through K8. That's the expectation. So, you know, it's going to be hard, it's going to be difficult. We're going to have to, you know, really look at everything closely. And again, as Dr. Robinson said, if the art schools are what we, you know, it's most popular, then we need to create more. Same thing with the medical programs. Medical programs, STEM programs, you know. I think that you'll see more and more of the families in my area supporting the schools if they know that their children can continue in the K8, if they go into a K8. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Andrews, and then after Ms. Andrews, if I can just ask the board, let's go back to staff and have them read the list, because we have two other workshops and a special meeting today, and we're not.
Yeah, and this will be quick, but it's easy for us, and we're continually talking about it. We don't spend the time to investigate how we look and how well we're doing. I've already said that earlier, and I heard Ms. Ayala say it too. We need to really look at the numbers, the data. That's going to tell us how well we're doing. Who's in the programs, who's not? When you tell me about Plomosa, I know Plomosa, and so I kind of know what that is. But when we start looking at all the blocks of Palm Beach County, we're a big district. We're a really big district, and we can kind of look at all our data to say, there's nothing going on over in the Glades, per se, and the arts piece. Nothing probably, when you kind of look at the big picture here. And I know I'm there all the time, but I just know even in the Central West that the schools are doing the best that they can to provide their own programs so that they can be successful. But we need to look at the numbers, the programs, the kinds of kids that we have. And we can tell then where we're truly providing equitable access for choice programs. Then we can see what we truly want. What's the popular things? I get most of my calls for Suncoast and Dreyfus every year. Everybody wants to get in, you know, and they don't know what to do. And I've got to find Dr. Johnson and all these other people to say, would you, three or four calls down, I mean, it's been happening for years. So we really do need to spend that time. That needs to be a workshop too, right there with the rest. For us to have that big piece of paper to say, what do we look like here in Palm Beach County as it relates to choice? Who's in and who's out? Who have we left behind? What's the most popular? We should be able to pick that out, and that can be something that's a fluid thing that we should look at periodically, so that when we make our plans, looking at our facilities and so on, we can govern ourselves accordingly. So as we talk about this, of what we want to do, let's make sure that that's right on the top of that, all of the things that you're written down today.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barbieri, I know you want to move on. I just, I just have to say this really quickly. I, I know Dr. Robinson is saying that she says we did Plomosa right in the way that it's been done, but this was not the impression that I have had for these last six years. My impression was that we were creating an art school for the South County to fill a gap. And so the idea that there's going to be no seats available for any children outside of Plomosa is not the perception that I had when we went for the referendum, when we talked to the, to the people voting. It's just not the perception that I had. It's not what I heard at those meetings. And I have to represent the people that I talked to, because that's the whole reason why I'm here. So if we're not creating a South County art school, we are letting down those people. Like, there's just no getting around it. We are letting down those people. So I have to say it, that that was not what I understood. And I think we need seats that are available at that school for everyone that lives in South County. And yes, that's Delray and then Boca and all these people that have been driving up to Bach for middle school. Some of them would like to go to middle school at a South County art school. So we have to be cognizant that that is real. That is a real thing, that we went forward and told people that we were going to try to create one. So, and it wasn't me saying it, it was a bunch of people talking about it. So this is, this is real, and we can't just say, sorry, you didn't get in in kindergarten, so the school is not an option for you. Like, that to me is just, it's asking kids to know what they want to do with their lives when they're five. It's just, it's not possible. I don't know what I want to do now, you know? So I think you really have to, you have to give people an opportunity to grow and change. And parents are, I think, will be very upset if we don't give them this opportunity. Thanks.
All right, so, Mr. Superintendent, if it's okay with you, we can have staff, Dr. Johnson, or whoever's at the table is going to go over the list. And if you can just keep out the K8s for now, because there's, we're going to have another workshop. So you heard the comments from the board, and I guess you'll be prepared to, will be prepared to discuss the K8 situation again the next time. But if you can go through all the other changes, so that when you bring us back a proposed policy, I'm not even sure how we do this without putting the K8s in there, because it's all one policy, but suggestions from you all?
So Chairman, if we may, if I will have time to really go and sit with staff while the other two workshops are going on, to allow us to come back at the end with the listing of questions, because we also have staff that is watching, that's been compiling.
Okay.
In fairness to staff.
So this is what I, I just want to put this on the record. So I need Ms. Paul and Mr. Burke to pay very close attention as we get ready for these potential workshops. The one thing the board has also skirted around is, for example, if we want to create more fine arts programs, then if, say you wanted to do six, so just like we don't even have the money to redo cafeterias, building a bunch of auditoriums across the county is, we don't have the money for any of this. So part of this discussion is going to be, and the hardest part is, are you going to close schools? Are we going to close, take programs away? And because at some point, you have to fund all of these asks. And you know, and again, as the only musician on this board, I don't know if you truly understand the cost of a music program. You know, just to get the instruments, to get, I mean, it is, it is a very, so what I want staff to do is to really just put the numbers on the table so the board can see how much money we're actually spending. And then because if this is the direction that the board is asking us to go, then we're going to have to talk about what comes off the plate. And those are definitely not going to be fun conversations, because each one of you are going to have to basically choose what happens. And so I think, as you think, and so if, if we want all of us to look at our entire choice programs and say, we want, we want to, we want to place big bets on fine arts and make sure that any kid in the district has access to it easily, well, we're not going to build a bunch of new schools. Because remember, we still have to go through the state, we still have to go through cost for student station, we still have over hundreds of current projects in place just on roofs and lighting and air conditioning. And so our capital budget isn't infinite. It's just not infinite like that. And so, you know, again, I am more than willing to fight the battle to do this, but. am more than willing to fight the battle to do this, but it's gonna be, you're gonna have to ask yourselves what goes away. And, and, and that is, and I mean, we can't even move until we say that, because again, so I need Wanda and Mike to really give the board all of the numbers. Just give them all of the numbers. And so, you know, to the, to the team, absolutely, just get ready for the workshops, just get them everything they need. But I guess I don't wanna, and then the other thing, I think the other harsh reality is, we are literally talking about a, a policy, and we're trying to work within an existing policy. Honestly, you almost have to just throw it out and start all the way from the beginning. And I'm talking about, like, when, when I say that, I mean, even how our current, most popular choice schools do their current processes. You literally have to undo it and say, that currently isn't working for us, and now we need to create something completely new. And then go through all the politics associated with that. And so I just wanna put on the record that this is, if this is where we're gonna go, once we get you all the details, it's, it's gonna be heavy. It's gonna be heavy. We're gonna have to do it together. It can't be, staff brings a recommendation to close these eight schools, and then all of a sudden you say, oh, nope, don't want that. We've gotta figure out this dialogue and a process and a timeline to really talk about the hard parts of this.
Dr. Robinson?
So all I have to say is, nothing good is easy, and I'm ready for it, right? And so, you know, and I also think that if we have the nerve to dream the dream, right? So first, I still think we have to do an analysis of our choice programs, and, and I think that we can look at the application data to help us determine what is wanted. And, and maybe there's something, as part of this strategic planning process, we could get input from parents on programming that they wanna see. I'm, I'm not certain about that, but, but what I know for certain is, I got a phone call from people from, one of our school's foundations that was putting, you know, wanted to put more than a million dollars on the table to increase the number of black students in the school, right? So, well, I'm, it was Dreyfus, right? And so my thing was, well, like, instead of doing recruitment for middle school, help me develop arts in elementary, so more kids have exposure in elementary. So, you know, that's, that's conversation has to take place. But I think that if we create the, you know, the 2021 vision of what choice looks like in Palm Beach County, that people will be willing, of, of course, you know, we don't know till the check clears, clears the bank, but people will be willing to, to join us in that dream. But to, to your point, tweaking the same thing may not be visionary enough for them to put their money on the table. So, but I, listen, I'm ready for it, because I, I think that we have, we have an awful lot of programs, and some of them are maybe not accomplishing the goals we would want them to accomplish. So I'm, I'm ready. I just think we need to go through a thoughtful process about it.
All right, Ms. Superintendent, with your suggestion, we'll move to the next workshop, and your staff will come back at the end of...
Thank you. So now we will have the Chief of Staff's office provide their monthly update on the development of our next strategic plan. As they are coming up, I wanna take this additional opportunity to encourage students, parents, community members, and district employees, especially our school-related staff, like teachers, counselors, bus drivers, food service workers, and custodians, to complete the feedback survey on district priorities before it closes this Friday, April the 9th. We have heard from over 24,000 individuals, including 5,000 students, which I am exceptionally proud of. A big thank you to all of our principals, directors, and community partners for promoting the survey during the last few weeks. Let's keep the momentum going on this feedback. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Tierney and Mrs. Villa-Vincenzo.
Chairman Barbieri, Vice Chairwoman Mrs. Brill, School Board members, Dr. Fanoi, very pleased to be here this afternoon to help facilitate Board Workshop Number Three on Strategic Plan Development. This is the monthly update. We come to the board once per month. This is by design supposed to be a short update. We're coming off a very long Equity Workshop last Wednesday. We're heading into a long Equity Workshop next Wednesday. So this is a monthly check-in update to give you a status on where we are on strategic plan creation. Our agenda, what we'll cover today, we'll look at survey participation to date. We're gonna recap the first Steering Committee meeting that happened late last month, and we're gonna talk about the date for sharing the draft goals that will guide the next strategic plan. We'll also share some next steps for the draft Equity Statement that the board just completed. You've seen this slide before. We're in Phase One currently, which is the leftmost column outlined in yellow. We're in pre-work, which is still evaluates. We're getting feedback on where we are in the eyes of the community and staff, which will guide us on where we should be. That's mostly done through a survey that we'll touch on through the next, during the next slide. We've heard the board loud and clear regarding the necessity for as much community input and feedback as possible regarding the strategic plan. You'll recall that the, the board asked us to explore the Council of Great City Schools facilitating the complete creation of our strategic plan. While that did not work in its entirety, the council had a very interesting philosophy articulated by Mr. A.J. Crabhill regarding soliciting community feedback. So should the board be interested, we are prepared to set up a platform, a framework, and the content, so that individual board members could interact with their constituents directly. So we would set up the platform, the framework, support you with contact, and then you would host the meetings, so that you hear the feedback directly from constituents, and then that would funnel back to help guide the plan. So obviously, we're not asking for a vote night, right now, Mr. Chair, but if there's enough interest on the board, that would happen late this month, we would, we would move forward with that plan.
Board members, you, yes? Got a lot of yeses.
Thank you. So our survey that launched on March 22nd, our goal was to match at least the 18,000 interactions that guided the creation of the last strategic plan that will close this Friday on the 9th. So as of March 5th, or as of April 5th, excuse me, we had 24,000 responses. We're pleased with that. We're gonna continue to push through Friday to get as much feedback and as many responses as possible. We're currently at just about 24,000 responses. Of those responses, 5,000 are students, 11,000 are parents, and those are parents who are not employed with the school district, and we have 8,000 employees. So we're relatively pleased with the, the kinda demographic of the people responding. We will publicly show the survey results at a strategic plan workshop coming up in May on the 4th. That will give us enough time to analyze the many open-ended questions that are part of that survey as well. So we'll make that very public, so everybody sees, building enough time to do an analysis of those open-ended questions. You've seen this slide before as well. Before I address the slide, I'm gonna mention that for anybody watching on television, they can, they can scan that QR code now and then take the survey right now off the screen. So anybody who has not taken that survey and is watching this meeting is welcome to scan it using a cell phone and then participate in the survey. We've had staff members and principals sharing this widely. We've had community partners both taking it and sharing it. I do wanna mention and thank the Multicultural Department, who has not only disseminated this widely, also used paper copies when that's most appropriate for that population, as well as weaving this survey into the, to the regular conversations they're having with the community that they support. So thank you to Multicultural. They've been tremendously helpful.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tierney. So, we also wanted to provide a very brief update about our first Strategic Plan Steering Committee meeting, which happened on Monday, March 22nd, as Mr. Tierney said, the same day to coincide with our Phase One Feedback Survey launch. As we shared with folks leading up to that, the meeting was recorded and posted to the district website. All subsequent meetings will also be recorded and posted to the district website. We also streamed it live. We also had the board office put that on all your calendars, just as a reminder to tune in. So if you're interested, you can watch it live, or again, catch the recording. They covered understanding, you know, the Steering Committee's role in the development process, kind of norming on what a strategic plan is, what it isn't, and then looking at some sample plans to kind of identify some structural and, and content affinities that they liked. And again, the meeting was facilitated by Insight Education Group. The rest of the meetings will also be facilitated by them, and we did do an exit survey, and most folks seemed to, seemed like there was some, some good stuff happening on Meeting One, so we're excited to continue that work with our second meeting coming up next week on Friday, April 16th, beginning at 2:30. Again, we'll be livestreamed to the district's YouTube channel, and also recordings posted later. And I know the board has talked a lot about equity. You know, the Strategic Plan Steering Committee is tasked with drafting goals and associated measures to present to the superintendent, which will then come forward to the board for, for recommendation for approval. And so we really wanna make sure that the next meeting is, is focused on equity, to make sure that the Steering Committee members are building on the critical work the board is doing. And so, you know, some of the things that Mary Furtakis has done with y'all in terms of the root cause analysis, and really looking at our data and where we are from an equity standpoint, the Steering Committee will be engaged in similar work during Meeting Two. And we actually just had a meeting the other day with both Insight and Ms. Furtakis. So we meet with both of them regularly, which is what we shared back in our last update, because we know we wanna have alignment with all this work. So just wanted to quickly plug that. And so again, just a shout out to our Communications Department. Again, we are posting everything to our website. Transparency is critical. Just making sure that, you know, all of the materials that the Steering Committee receives, that the community has access to that as well. So again, if you go to palmbeachschools.org/strategicplandevolution, you'll find all the information there. And so, yep, again, that's on your calendars as well, so that you remember just to tune in. So we wanna finish up just by touching on our accountability timeline. This is something that we presented back in January when we first started this work. And so nothing has really changed, with the exception of when we plan to present draft goals and measures to the school board for consideration. We had tentatively suggested May 19th as the date, but just due to some scheduling things, we've moved that to May 26. Now, some of you may remember that that is the day that we actually have an Equity Workshop. So what we intend to do on that day is split it in half. You know, our last workshop with Ms. Furtakis is going to be next week on Wednesday. So it will largely be up to district staff to keep that work moving forward. And so what I have proposed with Mr. Tierney is using May 26 as a day to plan with the board. So the first half of that workshop, really talking about expectations, and whether or not y'all want to continue having a dedicated Equity Workshop each month. So that's why you see TBD, June, July, August. You know, just listening to the conversation that just transpired, I think scheduling things like choice workshops around equity, right? Because the conversation is really around equity, not necessarily just, what is choice. These might be days to do that. It will give staff time to prepare, but also still elevate these equity conversations, as opposed to trying to have them on other workshop days or before a regular board meeting. So that's something that we can talk about on May 26. And I think also just making sure that we're involving more staff. While I know the Chief of Staff's office really appreciates this work and enjoys supporting it, there's a lot of other equity work going on in the district, and we wanna make sure that we're bridging that gap between the board's work and the work that district staff is doing. So the first half of May 26, we'll really be able to talk about that and what the expectations are for planning, and whether some of these other topics like choice in K to eight schools could fit on this calendar, so that, you know, once other staff, you know, gets all their thoughts together, we can program that and they can work towards that. We all, I also hope at some point, we will have a discussion on the equity policy and the intended outcomes outlined in that policy, to understand current state versus desired state. So I'm hoping at that time on May 26, we can figure out where that would go. Then the next half of May 26, we'll use a couple hours to present the draft goals to you that, you know, the superintendent will bring from the Steering Committee. That will also allow time for public comment. So another opportunity for the community to engage with you around the strategic plan. And so again, just wanted to kind of let everybody know about that change in the timeline, so you can see what we're working towards, so that once we come back in late July, that's not the first time you're seeing the goals, right? You'll have seen the survey data on May 5th, as Mr. Tierney said. Then we'll come back on May 26 with those draft goals and measures. And then, you know, our focus groups will happen. We'll bring some information back to you in June. And then in July, late July, we should be able, we should be in a good place where we feel like we can make some progress. And so that kind of ends the strategic plan update for this month, but we did want to spend, you know, just a few minutes on where we are with the draft Equity Statement. So we have spoken to Mary about what April 14 will look like. We know that, you know, processing information is incredibly important, and we know that some folks may have some additional ideas on that draft statement. So we've been working with Mary to make sure that on April 15th, we have 30 minutes set aside for y'all to revisit that, just as a collective, to have that conversation, to not only kind of, you know, surface any other thoughts and feelings you may have since our board workshop last week, but also to try and think about the stakeholder feedback gathering sessions, and, and whether there are questions, other than just asking people to provide direct feedback, but other questions you may want to solicit from the community around the equity work. So, you know, we're still working on that timeline. I think, again, you know, as I said, Chief of Staff's office is trying to do a lot of things, so we wanna make sure that we're bringing in staff who can help carry some of this work forward. But, you know, in talking to Mary, those stakeholders are largely gonna be, you know, folks that are on the Diversity and Equity Committee, and folks from historically marginalized populations, right? Because those are the ones whose voices we wanna elevate. But more to come from Mary on that. And we are in the midst of the grammar check, so we will share that with you no later than April 9th. That way, y'all can kinda see if there's any suggested changes before we get back together on April 14th. So just wanted to, to, to update y'all on that. And then just lastly, in terms of next steps, don't forget, next week, we'll be with Mary again on April 14th. The focus is mission and vision. I know some folks have said that they would like to bring some things forward for April 14th, which is totally fine. But again, really, we're contracted with Mary, because we wanna have that strong foundation for our strategic plan, right? So we're very intentional about what those three workshops would look like with her. So if there are other topics that need to come forward, again, I think that's something on May 26th, we can absolutely discuss. So I think if there are placeholders, you know, things that you kinda wanna get out there, please email us and let us know, so we can put it on that agenda. But just wanted to remind everyone that the focus is really the mission and vision. We've talked to Mary about Portrait, Ms. Furtakis about Portrait of a Graduate. We know that came up at the Equity Workshop last week. So we'll be providing some more information, because that is, again, an intense process, if we're going to do it the way that you should, involving the community, getting focus groups together. So mission and vision will really be a precursor to that work, to kinda put some guardrails around the Portrait of a Graduate. So we'll have more information on that. Mr. Tierney and I have met with the CIO and the Deputy Superintendent to start those conversations, so wanted to put a nod to it there. And then, don't forget your pre-work. We sent it last week. Please email Ms. Furtakis on April 9th. You received a copy of that email today, in case helpful. And then you also received a copy of the slides, which should go in Section Two of your binder, also up on our Google Drive. And then, please just continue to promote the survey, as Dr. Fanoi said, and Mr. Tierney said, at the beginning of the workshop. And don't forget the Steering Committee on, on the second, on April 16th. And we will be in touch this week with potential dates, options for those board member-led community meetings. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Tierney.
And then our next Strategic Plan Workshop is scheduled for May 5th, and that concludes the workshop, unless there's any questions.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. And I don't know why I'm confused, but I'm confused. I looked last night to see what the pre-work is, and I don't know what the pre-work is. I see the pre-work from April 9th, but I don't see it here either.
So it's, it's basically, if you...
To review everything that we did?
To review everything. And then send Ms. Furtakis any words, or phrases, or thoughts that you want captured in that mission or vision. There's also, if, if you go back to the original email, we kind of had this conversation in December about mission and vision, and that's when we determined we needed Mary for longer. I would suggest watching that again. It's about an hour long.
So just as a follow-up, so if we've reviewed everything, and if we're comfortable with the words that we see, and if we don't have any new words to add to it, then we're good?
Basically, for the Equity Statement, you were looked, asked to review others and email words, phrases you wanted included. It's the same, except now for mission and vision.
But if we're good with what we're seeing, we're...
If you're good with what you're seeing, or if you're like in other districts, then it's just that.
Yeah. And I don't know if you wanna email Mary, Ms. Furtakis, that, or we can do that on your behalf, because I know sometimes she wants to just know that she's gotten everyone's voice. So if there's nothing, I would just maybe follow up with her and tell her that as well.
Mrs. McQuinn?
Just a follow-up to...
Just a follow-up to Mrs. Brill. I had to read it several times, too, because I'm thinking, I did this. But, the first one was words and the phrases that we wanted in our equity statement. And this is specific to our vision and mission. So, I went back and reread our current vision and mission, and I only had one thing to add. So, you are not the only one who was confused for a while.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, regarding the Portrait of a Graduate, is that something that we can include as we have the community input meetings? So, it's not like a separate ask of the community?
I think we could. I know Mr. Tierney may have something to add. I think it's, we're doing a lot at the same time, right? So, we have our strategic plan work, we have our equity draft statement, you know, probably maybe something with the mission, vision, if you want to put that out on the, you know, street as well, for people to give feedback to. And then, Portrait of a Graduate. So, I think we kind of want to make sure that we're being mindful of what we're asking the community and when. Obviously, if we can maximize time and kind of get them all in one shot, that would be ideal. But, I think it'll just depend, because I know Portrait of a Graduate takes a little bit longer, and we may need, you know, the strategic plan in place, you know, and then follow it with other community meetings that maybe are about, hey, we adopted our plan, here's how we're implementing it, you know? And then, during those meetings, after we adopt our strategic plan, we can talk about Portrait of a Graduate. So, I think it's just, there's a lot going on. And so, while we could, yes, bundle them all together, I think we just want to make sure that we're doing them all justice.
Okay. So, okay, so, just to follow, so I just see the opposite of that, and I don't know, it's clear in my mind, the Portrait of a Graduate is where we're trying to go, what we want our graduates to look like. And the strategic plan is the superintendent's implementation plan to, that we've all talked about and got input on, to get there, right? So, in my head, I really can't figure out how we do a strategic plan without doing the Portrait of a Graduate first, but whatever. I could just promise you, the ones I host, we're going to talk about the Portrait of a Graduate. So, and then, the other thing is just-
Dr. Robinson, can I just follow up on the portrait before we move on? So, I hear you, and it is somewhat counterintuitive, except we've really looked into the Portrait of a Graduate a lot, and it is a long, extended process of community feedback, to get a quality one. In addition to having the equity statement, the mission and vision, according to Ms. Furtakis, would really be the bedrock and the start. So, the board, and I believe you specifically, has talked about strategic plan, some flexibility or ability to amend over time, rather than just a rigid five-year, this is it. And to me, that lends itself, create, define equity, mission, vision, strategic plan, with the then-implementation of the Portrait of a Graduate as part of that strategic plan, and the more flexible, less rigid iteration that we had last time.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to argue about it. I just respectfully disagree. So, then, the other thing is, if you would just talk to, I guess it's, is it Insight? Okay, Insight, about how do we, in their experience, how do we get the voice, I'm going to say, of the voiceless, the people that we have not heard, right? So, like, yeah, we're sending out the survey, and we're making these opportunities to speak up. We're making them available, but that is, that's not the same as reaching people, right? And so, I would just like to get their input based on their experience, on how we do a better job of that, because what's going to happen is, we're going to hear, I'm going to make it up and say, 100 voices from those we normally hear from, and three voices from those we normally don't. And then, that 100 is going to rule the day, right? And so, if we're really trying to figure out how we meet the needs of the least of us, the, those with fewest blessings, is just getting that voice, and this is not the first time that this has been found to be difficult, but I would just like to get their input on how they suggest we do that. Thank you.
And I will share, they will be facilitating the May 26th workshop as well, once we bring the draft goals forward, so, but we will check on that.
Ms. Phyllis, maybe you're already doing this, but are we working with the student council, county council president? So, he's getting input from all the high schools? Because certainly, that'll help us get input from some of the kids that would normally not be able to participate.
Yes. We are asking him to share that, but he is also a member of our steering committee.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, his work, I mean, we've got 5,000 kids to respond. I can't even get 5,000 kids to tell me if you want to get out of school, so, yeah, he's doing a good job.
Okay, great, great. Any other questions? All right, Ms. Furtakis?
Thank you, Mr. Tierney and team. At this time, I'll have Magic Mike Burke come forward.
Oh, boy.
With Heather Canus to go over our budget update. And I would ask the board, you know, there's a lot of information coming down, obviously with all the CARES Act, a lot for you to learn, a lot for us to learn, as we begin this journey of working through our summer, and ultimately, our COVID response.
Thank you.
So, Heather and Mike have done, have a lot of work ahead of them, and they've been doing a lot of work up to this point. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burke at this time.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Yeah, it's exciting times on the budget front. We've got just our quick agenda here. Ms. Canus is going to take us through some legislative proposals that have a budget impact. So, it's not a full-fledged legislative update, but just really those financial items. We're going to talk a little bit about the current state budget proposals from the House and Senate, which are still in flux. And then, I'm going to conclude the workshop, talking about, or a conversation about the federal stimulus funds headed our way. So, with that, Ms. Canus, why don't we jump right in?
All right. So, looking at the legislative timeline, we're over halfway through the legislative session. And just yesterday, there was a general revenue conference, and it had a lot of good news, that Florida's economy, the outlook is great, and it's rebounding, you know, as, continues to rebound as it has in, for the past months. The House and the Senate, which is going to impact the House and Senate budget proposals that were released just a couple weeks ago, because that was based on the old information. And if you recall, back in August of 2020, the state, through the EDR, went back and they adjusted the general revenue estimates. They reduced them significantly downward, based on the potential impact of the pandemic. And the subsequent general revenue conferences that have come out, the actual revenue collected has been significantly more than those projections. And so, with this most recent projection released yesterday, they were able to add back an additional $2 billion into general revenue for the fiscal years '21, as well as '22. And so, we know that that's going to significantly impact those budgets that were released just two weeks ago. In addition to the revenue estimating conference, there was also an enrollment estimating conference last week. The final documents have not been uploaded, but we do know that the initial loss in student enrollment was projected at 48,000 students, and that has now been reduced downward to only 22,000 students. So, with those two changes, they're very significant. It is going to have a significant impact on those budget proposals that we're going to go over today, but we know that they're going to change with our next meeting.
And we have to pay close attention for the next couple of weeks, because the legislature just found out, right? They've got $2 billion more to work with, but they have not decided, they haven't broken that money into what they call the allocation process, where they decide how much will go to education, how much will go to health and human services, that type of thing. And there is this perception, we've heard from Mr. Lefay, that schools are awash in federal funding, and that we're, we may not, you know? So, we, it's important, a couple of weeks here, well, when we're coming down to the critical end. But, anyway, I just want to be clear, just because the state's doing better, doesn't mean necessarily that that money will make its way into the FEFP.
And looking at those bills that are, that have significant budget implications, there are two that we are most concerned about, and those are those related to school choice and vouchers. So, we have the House proposal, and we have a Senate proposal. Both of those bills consolidate the different scholarship programs, and they take those scholarship programs that used to be funded outside of FP, FEFP, and now put them and make them funded through the FEFP program. With the House proposal, they're not increasing the current cap that we have on the vouchers, but they are expanding the number, which student populations would, or which scholarships would be exempt from that cap. So, that in essence, is then going to expand the number over and above what the current cap is. And looking at the Senate proposal, the Senate proposal does significantly increase the cap of the number of students that would be eligible. It's very hard to estimate what the financial impact would be. So, the State Economist did project, did a projection on the Senate proposal, that it could potentially cost up to $6.6 billion in the fifth year of implementation. And to put that into perspective, our current proportion of FES and McKay scholarships, compared to the total statewide, is about 5%. So, if we take 5% of that $6.6 billion, that would be over $300 million. And so, the voucher program is turning into another charter school. And it is a much easier way, because there are much less restrictions for private schools than there are for charter schools. So, this really could expand exponentially, and so, could have a very significant impact to school districts.
Yeah, I'd just like to weigh in on this one, too, because this could alter education as we know it in our state. The, to give you like a comparison, you know, charter schools started in 1996, so we've had 25 years of charter school growth. Over that time, they've grown to 341,000 students, which is about 12% of the state. That's, their total budget's about $2.8 billion. So, this, these vouchers potentially, or scholarships, could grow to $6.6 billion in less than five years, more than double the charter schools in less than five years. And Florida's leading the way in this voucher scholarship. And so, it's a potential huge shift of money that normally would go into traditional public school, district-operated schools, to private schools that do not face the same level of accountability. And, yeah, I think you're going to see even charter school operators taking a step back and saying, boy, would it make more sense just to do a private school and take the voucher. So, if this goes unchecked, we're going to have more competition than ever, and we could see a significant impact to our enrollment, you know, like nothing we've ever seen before. So, we just can't state that much. That's why Ms. Canus and I are both just kind of harping on it here, but this is a big deal.
All right. Next, we have impact fees. And impact fees was a big topic a couple years ago. So, with this bill, they're proposing to limit the amount that we could increase the fee, make us, you know, based on the increases, have to phase those increases in. And what the county does right now, they perform a survey every two years to look at the values, to see how much they can charge. This bill restricts that to, they would have to only, they could only do it every four years. So, it would limit the amount of time in between the increases as well. And then, I wanted to highlight the taxes and fees for remote sales. This is related to making sure that we are collecting all the sales tax revenues that we should for internet sales. And the reason, and then, any additional revenue that's collected would go to cover any shortfalls and enhance the unemployment fund. And the reason why, you know, I thought it was important to mention this, is that, you know, there's, whenever you're going to have a shortfall, the money has to come from somewhere, and potentially, that's general revenue, state general revenue. That's where the majority of our funding comes from. So, we want to make sure that, that any additional revenue streams that could be utilized to cover a shortfall are, because we are competing for the same, limited state revenue sources. We do have a bill on school district funding, which is expanding bonuses for Cambridge programs, and as well as certain preparatory classes that are necessary for ACE programs. The language is very vague as to whether we'd actually be getting additional revenue to cover the additional bonuses we'd have to pay out. And then, the next bill is related to this civil liability damages for COVID-19. This one was actually signed into law to help to limit our school district liability for those claims filed related to COVID. And then, the last two are related to charter schools. One is allowing universities and colleges to authorize charter schools. The college and university would also be the LEA, so they would, the funding would not flow through us at all. The concern with this is, once you have, open it up to another authorizer, they could continue to open it up to other entities, other than colleges and universities. So, not giving us really any control over the charter schools that are opening in our district. And then, the last charter school-related bill is that they could just apply anytime, and tell us when they're going to open at any time. Just, again, limiting our control over the charter schools. So, now, getting into a breakdown, a comparison of the proposals, which are going to change significantly from what we have here, because initially, they were built on a reduction in enrollment of 48,000. So, based on the changes from last week, the next runs that we see, that's going to be reduced down to 22,000. Both the House and the Senate versions did have a reserve set aside for those missing students, in case they were to come back. So, it's going to be interesting to see how they treat that with the new proposals that come out. The Senate proposal is showing just a zero, flat, no change in funding, so it would be what we have right now. The House is showing a $50 increase. So, you would think that, you know, no change in funding, that's great, you know, we're going to be status quo. But, it really isn't, because we are going to have a decline in enrollment, because we were held harmless this year. So, we did, we are going to see an increase in students, but since we were held harmless at the 8,000 students that were lost, even though we're going to only have, we are going to gain back a couple thousand students, we never saw the loss of the 8,000. So, we're going to now have to recognize the loss of the 6,000 students, which equates to about $50 million. In addition to that, there is, the House and the Senate, they've already have agreed on increases in the FRS rate. And the impact in Palm Beach County, it's half of what it was last year. Last year, if you recall, it was about $15.5 million. This year, the impact's going to be $8 million, and that equates to about $50 per student as well. So, just with those two factors, you know, even with the House proposal, you know, that's enough to cover the increase in the FRS. If we were to stay flat, you know, we wouldn't even cover the increase in the FRS. And looking at, you know, just highlighting some other items from the proposals, the Senate version does not fully fund the charter school capital outlay. They're the only ones to, the other proposals do. All proposals, surprisingly, are recommending to not roll back the RLE, which is the first time in several years that they are not rolling back the RLE. Granted, property values are not expected to increase that much, about 2%, 2.5%, but that is, it's at least something, that they're not going to roll back the RLE. Both the governor and the House are looking at, you know, restricting the ESAR funds that we're going to be getting. Specifically, the House is almost kind of turning it into like a categorical-type funding, to try to make sure that we're spending it in ways that they think is most beneficial. And so, even for, you know, whatever the remaining portion would be, since they didn't restrict all of it, they still wanted us to be able to, to make us submit a spending plan, to say exactly how we would be spending those funds. So, it will be interesting to see how restrictive they'll be, because the, within the federal guidance, they did really push to give districts as much flexibility as possible. So, it will be a question as to, you know, Florida's not the only state that is trying to, to really try to control and direct how those funds are being utilized. So, I did cover a lot of the challenges already. You know, we are facing a decline in enrollment, so that's a significant loss in revenue. Yeah, we did adjust staffing, but we know that adjusting staffing to enrollment is not going to get us the full amount of that lost revenue. It gets us about halfway there. We also have the increase in FRS, which is significant as well. And just overall, and we don't know what, you know, what's going to, if the bill passes for the vouchers, which we do expect that something is going to pass, you know, what that actual impact is going to be. And FPL is proposing a rate increase, and at a minimum, it's going to be $3 million in FY '22, and it's phased in over multiple years. So, we're looking at another $3 million in '23, and a million and a half dollars in '24. Also, if you've been driving, you notice that, you know, fuel has started to increase, and whether that's going to, you know, level off, or whether that's going to continue to increase, could have a significant impact, once our fleet is fully operational again. And then, the mandates, that just actually outlines the specific mandates right now that the House is proposing on restricting the use of those ESAR funds. And you all are well aware about the pending charter school referendum litigation. We did prevail initially on two lower courts. The Fourth District Court of Appeal, through that en banc ruling, reversed those two lower court opinions. The Office of General Counsel, even though the board is intending to appeal, the Office of General Counsel has recommended that the district set aside the funds that would be the district, the potential charter school share in FY '22, pending the outcome of that appeal. So, that would be approximately $25 million. So that would be approximately $25 million that we're going to have to set aside for next year. And the Commissioner of Education sent out communication to districts earlier in March outlining some guidance on the ESR funds, the ESR II funds and how those funds should be utilized. And I wanted to highlight the fourth and fifth bullet where he specifically mentioned in there that these funds should be, we, districts should plan that these funds would be used to cover any additional students that were over and above what was included in the initial budget for FFP. And then also that we should monitor, you know, the legislative session, if we were to have a cut, these funds would be used, expected to be used to make up any of that shortfall. But looking at the initial House and Senate budget proposal, that doesn't seem to be as much of a risk as when we initially received this letter. Because when we initially received this letter, we were very concerned that a big chunk of these dollars would have to be set aside for that purpose until we actually knew what enrollment was going to be. And I mean, we still have that concern, but especially now, we're hopeful that with the additional revenue, with the positive revenue outlook, that some of that money would be directed to education to help mitigate the potential risk of having to take some of our ESR dollars to utilize for that purpose.
All right, I'm going to jump in here. You know, I was thinking, this budget, we're really in an unusual position, right? Because you just heard from Ms. Canus. On one hand, our general fund operating budget is hurting. You know, we have declining enrollment. We've got probably flat funding, maybe a slight increase in state funding. And we've got some rising costs with fuel and electricity and FRS rates. So the, our general fund operating budget is going to be under great strain. And then we have also this issue with the referendum that we have to reset and maintain equilibrium in the one mil levy and the revenue it generates and how we spend those dollars. So that, that's kind of a tough situation. And then on the other hand, we've got the largest infusion of federal dollars ever in the history of our nation. So I don't know if you guys remember the novel Rich Man, Poor Man, or it was a mini-series in the 1970s, but it was two brothers, right? And they both started from humble beginnings and the one became a wealthy businessman, the other one scrapped to get by by being a boxer. But I feel like we're going to get to play both roles in this type of rich man, poor man scenario because we've got a lot of federal money to work with and then we're on, you know, we're going to also spend time just trying to get by and keep our operating budget balanced. The, it's, it's really a tremendous thing here and the, you know, with all this money also comes great responsibility. And we're going to face a lot of scrutiny on how these dollars are used. And it's an exciting time as the Board is working on your strategic plan, that you, you know, here you've actually got some money to work with, right? This, this could be a very big part of the strategic, strategic plan, you know, how we go about using these federal dollars. And so I like this quote by a columnist that was in editorial in the Boston Globe. But, you know, the, the quote was that this once in a lifetime windfall is a good problem for schools to have, but it'll be a tricky one and best solved by focusing on those most in need of rescue. And I like the latter part the best. You know, I don't really like windfall because we need these dollars and we have a lot of unmet needs and, you know, the kids need our help. But I think that is just a good focus, that as we start planning on how to spend these dollars, that's where we turn our attention. Who is most in need of rescue? And we know from the work that Dr. Sheffield, Mr. Oswald have done and starting to do the diagnostics and look at the data, we have a lot of kids in need of rescue that are significantly behind, both academically and socially, social emotionally. So to quantify this, it's the, you know, just if you focus in on district operated share, if you combine ESR I, ESR II, and ESR III, we'll have over $540 million coming to us for the next three years. Now, ESR I we spent, that's in the rearview mirror. And we use that money to get through this year and deal with COVID and cost of PPE and everything else. But you've still got $500 million or half a billion dollars over the next three years to use, you know, to, to meet our needs and primarily address the unfinished learning. The, we get these funds based on the same formula from the federal government that we get Title I dollars, right? So it's, it's based on that free and reduced lunch information. The charter schools just, they get their share just based on their enrollment. So there's a little disconnect there. The charters, they're going to get their money just based on the size of their school. It doesn't matter if their kids earn free or reduced lunch, but that, that's out of our control. And then the private schools got a share of ESR I, but they, they've got a separate allocation that the Congress approved for them. So they're, they're not sharing in these ESR dollars, but they've got their own pot of money. You've got pretty broad discretion on the allowable uses of the ESR dollars. You know, ESR II can be used for the same things as ESR I. It can be used to address learning loss, to save and protect jobs and avoid layoffs and all that good stuff. ESR III, ESR III has a few requirements, but you know, I think they, they fit our needs and, you know, the, the big one is that you have to use at least 20% of ESR III, which is the American Rescue Plan, to address the loss of learning or what we're calling unfinished learning. And I, I don't see that being a problem. You know, I think ideally we'll spend well beyond 20% because that, that's the most critical aspect of all this. But there is a pretty long list of things you can use to spend the money on. And we're going to have to be really thoughtful and deliberate about how we go about this. We've, you know, been looking at any guidance we can find out there. Our district has some track record of working with ERS, so I included what they had put together in terms of guiding principles. You know, they said, and you're going to see some similarity. Then the next group is the Council of Great City Schools that I'm working closely with. But there's some alignment in these recommendations. And the, the first thing from, from both groups is that you got to, before you do anything, you got to understand your needs and really quantify, look at the student data, look at how far kids are behind, you know, and using equity lens to say, you know, where, where do we need to put our money? And then you want to then focus in, you know, this is not a time to experiment and try a lot of, you know, 100 new strategies. They're really recommending that you invest in a few proven strategies, you know, and make sure that you're going to have some impact. I'm going to go ahead and jump to the, the Council of Great City Schools ones because I like, I really like the way they put this together. And I was fortunate enough to be on the group that's, that's working on this and it's, they're going to be releasing information probably on almost a weekly basis or periodically, you know, as soon as it's available to, to help districts because this is such a big challenge. But the over, they laid out some overarching goals. You know, it's the first, you know, a lot of districts across the state or across the country haven't even opened yet. So first, you know, make sure you can safely reopen your schools. We, we've done that. You know, then address the unfinished learning. And then to utilize these monies in a manner that when they're, when they're over and done with in three years, that we've built something that's going to be sustainable and it's going to have a long lasting impact on teaching and learning and, and be equitable. So I guess I don't need to read all these to you, but I'm going to jump ahead as far as next steps because we need to, again, we need to be very deliberate about how we plan to use these monies. This is not something to like, to rush into. We need to take a little time on the front end to build a solid plan. And then we have to remain flexible enough over the next three years to, to make course corrections if needed, similar to what I heard Mr. Tierney mention with the strategic plan. So again, you know, I think we're, it's going to take a series of workshops and we're going to be fighting to get on your calendar, but we need to build that multi-year spending plan. You know, this is a big chunk of our budget. This is going to be about 8% of our traditional operating revenue. And, you know, it's just the, the work that goes, you'll be having a workshop on April 21st with Dr. Sheffield and Mr. Oswald on the student academic support plan. You know, that's, that started with Phase I with the tutorial work we're doing now and the summer program, and then we'll be getting into Phase II, which will start next school year. This will be the, the funding source behind that and then, and then other items and other board priorities. The guidance from the Council of Great City Schools has been very clear that, you know, we, when we start planning this, we really need to think with the, our goals and the end product in mind, you know, and, and lay out the metrics that we're going to use to track these investments so that at the end of the day, we can, you know, see what type of return on investment we had. Again, we're going to have a lot of scrutiny. You know, not everyone was in favor of passing this stimulus bill for schools. And it's just critically important that we're very transparent and deliberate in how we use these dollars and then that we're prepared to monitor and track, account for them and then demonstrate the impact that they're having on our students. The, you know, so communication will be important. And then the big one, number six there for us finance officers is ensure that we plan not just to spend these dollars for next three years, but ideally create a four or five year spending plan so that we can demonstrate how we're going to land this thing in three years and have a sustainable finish that doesn't leave us with a huge funding cliff. You know, when, if you think about $500 million over three years, that's roughly $166 million a year. And we just can't come to a screeching halt and see all these investments stop and, you know, have employees that we have to displace. So there's, it takes a lot of planning and how we're going to pace this work, you know, how we phase it over three years, how we, how we build it up and then how we kind of wind it down and how we leverage, you know, natural attrition within the district to create potential long-term jobs for people that may step into temporary jobs that are grant funded for two or three years. So it'll be a lot of collaboration with human resources, the academic division, finance, really all aspects of the district, you know, working with the superintendent to come up with a, a really solid recommendation. So that, that's kind of it for today. Oh, I got one more slide here. This is kind of the long list of allowable use of ESR funds. And you'll see, you know, you could buy computers, you could do ventilation projects. But I think we need to be careful not to use these dollars to try to do a shotgun approach to address a million problems. I think if we really want to have the impact, we need to like focus on a few key initiatives. What's it going to take to really catch the kids back up? You know, if that's more, you know, one-on-one instruction or small group instruction or more tutors or what have you, what can we do like on the short term or next couple of years to make that big impact and then develop the capacity and maybe, you know, training for the teacher so they can sustain it after that kind of maybe bump in staffing is gone? So I see hands going up. That concludes our, we had a timeline, you guys have seen this before. We're working towards budget adoption in September, tentative budgets in July, which is kind of aligned with your strategic plan. To me, all these things are kind of winding together, right? You got strategic plan, the ESR plan and your budget, and they should all go together. So it makes sense.
Mr. Burke, you've been very diplomatic in telling this board to, you know, walk slowly and thoughtfully through this process. As an attorney for 40 years handling estate planning, I've seen people win the lottery and then within two years they're broke. And I've seen families inherit lots of money from mom and dad and within three years the money's gone. So, you know, I've had this conversation with you already. I trust that you are going to be looking very closely at whatever everybody in this district comes up with on ideas, especially us on this, this side of the dais, to make sure that we do spend the money wisely and prudently and we don't end up three years from now wondering what we're going to do now because we have no money left to fix all these problems that we didn't get done because we didn't do the, handle the money prudently. So thank you for your diplomatic approach of telling us to keep our hands out of your pocket. But Ms. McQuinn, I think you were next.
I raised my hand to thank Mr. Burke along the lines of what you said, but for encouraging us to focus on a few well thought out priorities is what you said, priorities. And I could not agree more. That's awesome. Thank you for that.
Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you again, Mr. Burke, for your work with the council. And you said it quite right. I'm sitting on a working group also with the council. And a couple of things came up that I would like to hear your comments about. First of all, with this pot of money, the ESR funds, and we know that our other budget is the budget that's really shaky. So will we have a break, a separate breakdown as we begin to work through the processes of the things that we want? I know that you're going to be taking care of the real needs of the district as it relates to keeping us, making it for the whole year and getting a balanced budget. But this budget is three years in the making, so how will you actually have that separated so that we can kind of know where that money is going during the three year timeframe, which will be fluid because we'll be using it?
Yes, so this, you know, these federal dollars will be a big component of our total budget, but they'll be in a special revenue fund much like Title I dollars are or Title II. The, you know, part of the ESR dollars are intended to help deal with, you know, it's a direct result of COVID-19. And we do have some costs related to COVID-19. So there, there will be some opportunity for things that have hit the operating budget that we now have a funding source to, to cover. So we'll, we'll be having that conversation saying, okay, we've got $500 million for these ESR dollars, you know, some of this is going to have to go to PPE to start the school year and, you know, some of our costs related to COVID. But I think the, the big buckets will be, you know, what do we want to do about learning loss? And the, you know, ventilation, I'm hearing a lot of school districts talking about using some of this for capital projects and ventilation and all that. There is work on a, you know, another stimulus package at the federal level for $2 billion, I'm sorry, yeah, $2 billion basically in infrastructure projects across the nation, which at this point, they're talking about $100 billion for schools. So I would, if we were going to use this money for capital projects, I'd want to be really clear that it was really directly impacted by COVID and it's a response to COVID and not necessarily try to stretch it too far. But computers is one thing, we're, you're going to have a policy discussion later on computers, which is, we've invested quite a bit into this year and we'll have to sustain that. So there, there are some of those things that maybe are currently in the operating budget or the capital budget that could fit into these grants for a couple of years. So it is going to be kind of intertwined, but from an accounting standpoint, we must account for this dollar, these dollars separately. We will set up separate programs to track them. And like I said, we're going to be on the hook to be able to, so how we spend every dollar and, and hopefully then also show how that's moved the needle on student achievement. And that'll be very tricky and deliberate to make sure we have all those systems in place.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Let me just follow up, Mr. Barbieri with him. So a piece of this is a communication strategy, you know, that the community will have a chance to weigh in and not just at maybe a board workshop or one board meeting. It's got to be tracked somewhat to find out exactly what the community is saying and how we are actually responding back to the community in terms, just like you said, that we may be spending money on computers and other things and unfinished learning and so on. And so that dialogue has to be something, I think, that's going to be ongoing through some type of communication strategy. So are you working along with Claudia Shea and Communications to build a communication strategy for us?
Yes, that's, that's on the list of things to do for sure. The, the American Rescue Plan did require that, you know, I think it was geared more to districts that hadn't reopened yet, but they said they wanted your, your reopening plan had to get, had to get public input on that process. We've already done a reopening plan and then a second one for the spring to the FDOE. But I would never recommend that we shy away from public input, right? So we, I need to, I was hoping, you know, we'll have to figure out what the venue is for that. And of course, we can put, we'll be publishing and we can put things online and, yeah, I'm going to, I'll work with Ms. Shea and Mr. Tierney to figure out the best approach to that. And I want to also, it's kind of early in this process. I want to kind of see what best practices are, what, how other districts are going about it and then, and make sure that we do a good job with that.
And thank you, Mr. Burke, because I mean, that work is every week. And so I'm sitting there with my committee, my small group. So this was a great presentation today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Whitfield, then Ms. Ayala, then Ms. Burrell.
Thank you. I just, first of all, thank you so much for bringing this to us. When we did our raise for our employees this past year, I felt like we were pre-spending some of this money in the hopes that we were getting it. Is that something that you're taking into account? And is it, what's the impact of that?
Well, these funds really are not going to be going to employ salary increases. So no, it really doesn't factor into that. You know, we're, we're going to balance the operating budget on its own. That is, I'm glad you asked the question because it's a great point. So, but when I go to the bargaining table this year, I'll be the poor man, right? It's not going to be, it's not going to be the rich man showing up with all the federal dollars because I think the only way that these dollars maybe will benefit our current employees is that if, you know, if we, if we have extra jobs we need them to take on, you know, if we do tutorial programs or if we had any type of extended learning or, you know, we, and, and that's a tricky balance too because you only got so much capacity, you know, so much work you can expect of people. But no, this, these dollars should really not even be pointed to when it comes to talking about salary increases.
Ms. Ayala?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Burke, how much additional projected revenue would not rolling back the RLE bring forward?
That's going to, that's going to put about 212 million, over 200 million into the state coffers. It's not as much as it normally would be, you know? If, in better times when tax values were increasing 5% a year, it would have brought in probably triple that amount. But it's, it's nice to see, we've been asking for that for years. And now I think the state did it kind of out of desperation because they're, you know, they need every dollar they can get. And so it's not having the impact like it dollar they can get. And so it's not having the impact like it may have had if they had been doing this for three or four years, and building up reserves or something. But at least it's positive, in that it's a fairly painless way to, to put more money into education.
Yeah, I have a follow-up, Mr. Chairman. I ask because the market's doing so well, which then led me to ask a question Ms. Whitfield already sort of asked, but where employee raises fall with the budget outlook, given what we did this year for next year? Is your answer still the same if we're looking at general funds and not these specific funds?
Yeah. You know, when we started last school year, I was not optimistic there'd be any employee salary increases. And then, the, the governor funded the lion's share of our salary increases with his $500 million to raise the starting teacher salary. So then we, you know, the board was, I thought generous and very equitable in that they said, you know what, all employees need some level of salary increase. So we kinda stretched things there. And we, we benefited from the state holding us harmless on our enrollment and keeping our funding in place. When we started last school year, none of those things were for sure. In fact, I expected full well that we would get adjusted for the second semester, and we'd start losing revenue. So I was really pleasantly surprised by those executive orders that really truly held us harmless. But, you know, that, that's kinda gone in behind us, and I'm hoping that the employees will appreciate that 3.5% raise and realize that it was kind of an unexpected nice thing to happen, and it, it may have to last them a while. Because, you know, as long as our enrollment's down 6,000 kids, and the state thinks we're flushed with federal dollars, and they're not really interested in increasing the base student allocation, it's gonna be lean. And there is gonna be kind of these two different worlds, where we're gonna have federal dollars to do some really important work, but we're, it's, it's limited. And it, it can't be used to, to just increase salaries of, of people in our operating budget.
Thank you so much.
And I would just follow up, you know, as Heather and Mike and Leanne have taught me about the budget over the years. So with the ESER dollars, they have an end date. Our general operating rating fund rolls over every year. So since that number will be small, we can't do salary increases with ESER money, because it is not, it's not gonna continue in perpetuity. So when we get these, so that's, I mean, that, the example with the rich man, poor man is actually pretty good, because we, we fund our salaries through the reoccurring costs, not money that has a, a, a cliff. That's the, and I think in the superintendent's conferences with the council and just around, this has people getting a lot of anxiety, because you hear the big numbers, but it really can't, I mean, we, and I think, and I'll just say this out loud for the principals, you know, we have to be, you wanna talk about getting audited over the next three years. It is going to be intense, everything we do. And so I think we all have to get prepared for a lot of systems of checks and balances over the next three years in a way I don't think we've experienced before.
Vice Chair Wembro.
Thank you. So I have a question, but you don't have to pull up the slide. It refers to, to slide 13, and I may have follow-up after it. So that slide shows the breakdown between the district-operated schools, the charter schools, and the private schools. Are we the pass-through for the funds for the charter schools, or does it go directly?
We, we are the pass-through, yes.
So then if I may follow up, I have two questions. One is, do they need to follow the spending the way we determine? Okay, so they can do their own thing?
No, they do not. They'll be able to.
Okay. And are we responsible for monitoring? Because I know the scrutiny is going to be there on us. Are we responsible to monitor how the charter schools spend those dollars? And the private schoo, well, the private schools only get it, you know, for 2022.
So, yes, I think you've kinda answered your own questions there. We, we are the pass-through. We, we do have a responsibility for oversight. The charter schools, they'll be able to look at that federal guidance, potentially, and use the money for any of those things that are allowable under federal guidance. They're, you know, Ms. Canus is the expert on this, because you really monitor charter schools. Would you like to add anything about how that process works?
We require the charter schools to submit to us the same information we're required to submit to the DOE. So they will have an approved budget that they submit. DOE, it depends on whether they require us to submit the plans to them for approval, but regardless of whether we submit them to them, we have them. And then in terms of, for the, the private schools, we can't pass the money through to the private schools for that one share, for that, that's only in ESER I. We have to buy those items on their behalf. And so those, you know, so they're following all of our regular rules and procedures. Any assets that are purchased are actually ours, district assets. So, yeah, we heavily monitor those funds, and we're required to, through the federal regulations.
Thank you. So the private schools will buy stuff, but we have to buy it for them and then deliver the merchandise that they want?
Correct. Yes. And it, there's, they have to remain school district assets. They're, we're not allowed to pass the money through to them.
Or if, if, if they want tutorial services, we, we contract with the tutorial firms and provide that service.
Are we getting any extra dollars for taking care of the private, the private schools to handle all the stuff that they want us to do?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, we're fortunate it's only an ESER I that we had to deal with it, and not the other two. And there were some exceptions, because the, the funds were retroactive to March, where we were allowed to do some reimbursements, but we required them to provide supporting documentation. So we have that available for, for our district audits.
Okay. And Mr. Superintendent, you know, I'm sure that you've already factored this in, but certainly while we're deciding, while the district decides and the board decides how we're gonna spend this money, we need to make sure the teachers are involved. Not just this CTA president, which I had, give him a lot of credit, because he's a very smart young man. But I mean, the teachers that are in the classroom every day that know what their kids need, based on what they've been through for the last year and a half. So hopefully, we're gonna get a lot of input. As one board member wanted the public input, certainly, there's no more important person to give us input than the teachers that have to teach these kids and help them catch up. So hopefully, we're gonna get a lot of input from them. Yes?
Yes. I mean, that guidance that says, you know, start with the end user in mind, that's what they're trying to say, is like, think about how this is gonna impact your teachers. You know, if you're gonna do this program, what does that mean in their daily life? You know, can they, do you have to take something off their plate to make this work possible? And then also extend it to the students. What does this mean to this student day? You know, how much time are they gonna be spending, you know, doing whatever? So, yeah, that needs to be the mindset, and we'll have to get the input.
Okay, great. Any other question? Dr. Robinson?
So thank you for the presentation, and thank you for saying repeatedly that we need to address learning loss, because we do. And I think part of that addressing learning loss, whether we're talking about the COVID slide or the pre-existing differential, somewhere we need to acknowledge that maybe it's taking something off their plate, but we need to, we need to acknowledge that we have to figure out how to support our teachers in doing a better job. Because either, either there's room for improvement, which I think exists in every human, or we're just saying that children are defective, right? I don't know that we're saying that. I think that we're saying to adults, we actually heard this in our, in our last workshop, that, that we as a system need to acknowledge that we need to do a better job of supporting the adults. And our primary purpose in being here is to educate children. So, somewhere in there, and I don't see those words in here, but in my mind, and I don't wanna say professional development, it's, it's more than that, but just supporting the teachers and supporting the children. How about that? And then we also need to look, listen to our other employees. And, and I'm just gonna say, I said it before, but I had the opportunity to say it here, that I think that some of these one-time funds need to be used for making sure that we have appropriate HVA, HVAC systems to, so we can be ready for, and I'm gonna hate to say, but I need y'all to understand, the next pandemic. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was just at Dr. Robinson. I think the language they use in the document about teachers is intentionally increasing their capacity. And the reason why that's so important is because when the cliff happens, so your investments have to be so that it can continue beyond the money. And so a lot of it is, so, yeah, it's, it's, we're all gonna have to have our, I mean, and this thing is, this is all of us, principals, the board, like the level of intentionality. But I wanna just keep something one of y'all said, like, we have to think, like, if I had a perfect world, to be honest with y'all, we would look at K-12 and sit down every class we teach, and then say, what do we start teaching? Like, literally, like, we have to really start thinking about an, an amount of hours that we have in a day. Because, you know, I think this board has said on different occasions, you know, at a certain point, we just gotta think about the basics. You know, like, 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 literally looking at the basics. And Mr. Barbieri and I and others have had conversations around the new world that is happening. You know, we've been so immersed in the trauma of trying to deal with COVID as a school system, but, but the children and young people in this whole social media world have created a whole new ecosystem of information going back and forth. And, you know, so, you know, I would say it today, one of the things that I have been working on, you know, privately, is getting, you know, community support around financial literacy, because of what's actually happening. And I, I've talked to almost every board member, there's a young person in your life who has now figured out how to monetize selling shoes and video games. And, and it's, and when you start to really investigate it, the numbers that some of these kids are generating are huge. And so I think it's, I think that's gonna be part of our, like, this new capacity. Where do we wanna go in the future? And how do we make sure that we're setting our kids? I mean, think about, you know, the distance learning, as painful as that was, the majority of our teachers have a new skill set. As painful as that was, but every week, we saw them getting better and better and better. I'm now hearing about, you know, some of your children, the grandchildren who are in college, but I'm gonna move to New York, but I'm gonna take my classes at FAU. They haven't even been on a campus, University of Florida. And a lot of them don't even desire it at this point. So it, you know, we think about, we talk about this amongst ourselves, about the high school kids. How many of them have picked up jobs out of necessity? Or just because they didn't have anything else to do, they picked up jobs? And so when we ask them to come back to brick and mortar, some of them are gonna have to give up their livelihood to come back to school. And so we just have to think about the, the forced innovation of COVID, and then the reality that many of us have been doing something for a year, and it is now part of our DNA. So the example that I use, that people laugh about, is I don't think I'll ever go inside of another grocery store in my life. I like it when the bags show up at the door. It's just, it's just, and then, then if you use the app appropriately, it'll tell you, you have saved 73 hours in shopping. Ooh, that is, I got my life back. So I just, I just want us to think about. And then thi, this team, Palm Beach County, this team has led, in a lot of instances, the country on innovating and, and really doing things differently. And we did it out of necessity, because we were just buried in the, in the work. But now that you have schools that don't even start back until to, like, Monday of this week, and we've been doing it since September, we've gotta wanting to acknowledge that and praise ourselves for that. But then, let's go back and reflect on what we actually built, and see how we intertwine that in the future as we increase our capacity. I just wanted to say that, because it is, I, every day, I'm increasingly realizing, there's a new day out there. There's a new revolution that has happened with our children and young people that we have to, we have to embrace. We really, because, you know, we talk about the music thing, and, you know, another challenge that we're gonna have is, even if you, you said you wanted to increase every music program in, in our district, teachers is gonna be a problem. Like, literally getting that many high-quality teachers. So what do we do differently? And I think the example I use, my son has been taking, he was a beginning music teacher at Wellington Landings, music student, but the entire COVID experience, he had a private lesson teacher in New Orleans. So every, every Sunday, he's sitting in front of a computer with a headset on, practicing with, with a person hundreds, if not, you know, hundreds of miles away. So how do we look at some of these technologies to make sure that our children get to get experiences from high-quality folks that look like them, that, that are, you know, some, in some cases, I'm, I'm noticing a lot of kids doing a lot of traffic on social media, learning math and other skills from kids their age. It is a very fascinating thing, what is happening out there. And Ms., Ms. Ayala and I have been talking about this. It is, I, I encourage all of us to really start talking to our young people about how life has really changed for them, as we think about how we design our future work. Because I think it's exciting. I mean, it's gonna be hard. Lord knows it's gonna be hard. But I think it's gonna be very exciting to really be, because we've been open so long, being a leader in whatever innovations we create to meet the needs of all of our kids. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ayala, then Mrs. Andrews.
On a lighter note, Dr. Fanoy, you said you were the only musician up here. I'm proudly trained at Palm Springs Middle and John I. Leonard on the flute.
I apologize. I apologize. I apologize.
I love the arts, but I, I just wanted to make that shout out to my classical training here.
Hey, I can play the accordion. Every Italian kid can play the accordion. So, you know, let's, let's count that in, too. Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you. And I'm just back on the communications piece. Certainly, I want the teachers and others to have input. But, Mr. Burke, this was an excellent presentation, and I think it can be detailed and refined, because we have many educational advisory groups that we're presenting before each month. The region superintendents are out there with me, as well as principals and so on. And we need to be talking, because we're gonna be getting input. And I know this input's gonna be different, and it's gonna be ongoing. But if we educate parents, and begin to educate our community about what's going on as far as the funding is concerned, from the standpoint of what's coming from the state, as well as what's coming from the ESER funds, and how it's gonna work over the next three days, the more, the more the merrier. You know, you don't wanna kinda do a one-time shop. You can start beginning to talk about how much it is we've got, how we're going to actually look for voices, voices from all angles, and, and start educating people. And I think we, what we've done today was educate us. And, and I know that you've been on those committees, so, and I've been on them, too. So I think we can do some small vignettes, some mini presentations now, as we're moving forward with talking to people, because we're everywhere. And so we need to be letting people know what this is all about, because we don't want it just to hit them at one time, and all of a sudden, they're trying to digest it. And so we know a lot of people have a lot of ideas on how we're gonna help kids who have unfinished learning, as well as the kinds of things that we experienced before COVID. And parents have a lot of ideas of what needs to happen. And we know we've got some areas of Palm Beach County, in our ELL and ESE, and Glades, and African-American communities, and schools, where we got so much work to be done. I think parents need to kind of have a picture of what's happened with this money that came from the government, and be able to kinda know that they'll have a true voice, along with the school board and everybody else.
All right, Mr. Superintendent, if you have anything else for us with this workshop?
Chairman, I have no more comments at this time.
We need a motion to adjourn the workshop. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed? Workshop is ended, and the board clerk has asked for a five-minute break. So if we can come back here at 5:35, five minutes from now?
[inaudible]
Oh, yeah, I guess we need to do that first.
Dr. Sherwood, can you, can you come in and review with the board?
We'll unadjourn the workshop. Okay? Everybody agree? We're unadjourned.
Board Chair and Board Member Dr. Fanoy, thanks for allowing the team the opportunity to just reconvene on the feedback that was provided to us on the workshop around Policy 5.016. What we've done, we've just captured some of the feedback and comments by board members. Hopefully, we've captured all of them. But as I go through them, of course, the team, we did our very best, and you will definitely let us know if we have missed, if we've missed one piece. And I'll start with Ms. Brill. Of course, Ms. Brill, what is the purpose of, of our K-8 schools, and a board workshop at a later time on K-8, so that we can redefine our purpose here as a district, and review the enrollment of all of our school, all of our K-8 schools, as we talk about the intended purpose, and of course, the capacity of our K-5 schools to accommodate our K-8 students, and facilities? It came up with Ms. Brill, the facilities to accommodate K-8, existing potentials to add more seats via concretables, future K-8s designed on the onset to accommodate K-5 and 68. Ms. Whitfield, Plomosa's impact on Carver, concerns around students outside of Plomosa having access in the South County School of the Arts, discussion around boundary changes, problematic enhancements for, um, program, I should say, programs enhancements for Carver Middle, and the K-8 after-school activities, the cost, and the K-8 extracurricular activities and sports, the perception that is out there, making sure that parents understand the implications of the K-8s around those two pieces, and the arts at Carver, and more arts in South County area. And the initial intent for Plomosa as a South Area School of the Arts was your understanding. Dr. Robinson, I'll come back to Dr. Robinson. I'm gonna go, as I come up for air. Mrs. Andrews. Uh, Mrs. Andrews, the dual language continuum for District 6, and the eligibility criteria, really looking at our eligibility criterias for our choice programs, um, educating our parents around the choice process, and making sure that we're working with our parents, and they fully understand the process. Equity, equity in our programs as you're having the discussions now with the board in your workshops around the strategic process for the upcoming strategic plan, and the diversity in the recruitment strategy. in the recruitment strategies, transportation for the Glade students to the coastal schools to be provided those opportunities, and the continuation discussion around West Tech, increased programs, specifically the arts, like Wellington Landing has an art program, but they're in need of a stage. And want to see numbers on choice, on choice programs, demographically broken down, investigate how we look in terms of choice, which was somewhat aligned to what Dr. Robinson has asked for around an analysis and audit of our choice programs. Ms. McQuinn, Ms. McQuinn, comments around H.L. Watkins, the enrollment and the programs, and comments on the project-based learning and the positive effects of project-based learnings, which is a reflection and a true indicator of what's happening over there at the conservatory school. And Mrs. Ayala, Mrs. Ayala, the request for our choice data, dual-language continuum and filling the gaps within the area, and then comments on the mental health of our students due to COVID and the possible added stress when not assigned to a choice program. And our Board Chair, Mr. Barberi, emphasizing the need for the K-8 workshop and the language around the custodial parent, which we indicated that we would work with legal on that, because you're concerned around the 50/50 in the custodial parent, that both parents could deem themselves as the custodial parent. And we indicated that we would work with legal. And a special policy idea was a discussion, was just a discussion that you were having around the art school, and students at K-8 going to zone schools for activities and sports, which aligns with Mrs. Whitfield's comment around just making sure that our parents and community understand students participating in K-8, what are the, what's their opportunities for the extracurricular activities, including aftercare programming. And Dr. Robinson. Dr. Robinson, Dr. Robinson, policy lines 8 and 9, review the non-discrimination statement with the Office of OCR, and that's where we were talking as it pertains to the line around the Boy Scouts. And line 16, review the language around the English skills, particularly with the ELL piece we were talking about, and you asked us to look at the wording, the rewording of that when we talked about the limited access and so forth. Lines 120 to 125, add the right-to-refusal language into that space. Line 139, replace "limited" to "one exception." Not to say limited is only one exception, so why not call out "one"? And what did we agree to in the beginning for K-8s? Look at the history. So you've asked us to go back and look at the history to when we started the initial K-8. What was it that came to the board, and the understanding of the board of what our K-8 schools would look like? So we would have to do some research there. You didn't? You did? Okay. Transportation mapping across the district, review of where the gaps are, and I think that's the mapping that came back at one of our initial choice presentations, and I think the question is, where is that transportation mapping? Where are we, and how can we look at the gaps here as a district? And to review the curriculum and staffing for the choice programs, the adjudicators, criterias outlined as a district, and not just collecting resumes and leaving it to the individual schools. Right? And line 207, add language to read next choice cycle instead of next school year. Line 292, the addition of makeup days, clean up the language, meaning that there should be some makeup days in there, and could we clean up that portion? And agreeing with the choice five-year plan that we should have and continue with the choice five-year plan. And similar language for the arts as a continuum, like we have for IB and FAU, but I think there was a piece of biomedical, or something biomedical at FAU. And line 571, grade six, the common language revision. And then the analysis of the choice program, which is the audit, I think I had already mentioned that. And then the definition of success in choice program. What is our definition of success? What are we looking for, and how would we describe that for our choice programs for the school district of Palm Beach County? And again, board members, we captured, this is what we've captured. If we've left out anything or need to add, by all means, please let us know.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you, and this isn't you leaving this out, but I'd be remiss if I don't bring it up. I know that when you mentioned Mrs. Andrews' item, I believe it was about the dual-language feeder pattern. I would be remiss if I didn't say you need to look at the whole district, because I have that issue with Hagan Road, where Okeechobee Middle is the feeder pattern for the dual-language. So, I do think we need to look at the whole district and not be district-centric on any of the stuff that we mentioned. If one of us mentions something in our district, let's look at the whole, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sheffield.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and break now till 5:45. On the agenda, we need a motion to approve them. Motion by Ms. McQuinn, seconded by Ms. Ayala. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed? Motion carries 7-0. One item has been added for good cause, COM 1 Holocaust Days of Remembrance Proclamation. Good cause exists to add this timely and important item to today's agenda. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
Mr. Chairman, I have none to withdraw.
We have two items been pulled so far. We have POL A2, the electronic device take-home policy, has been pulled by Dr. Robinson, and POL IG 1, the policy inspector general, has been pulled by Mrs. Andrews. Board members, you wish to pull anything else? We need a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Disclosures and abstentions, are there any? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to update those joining us today on the school board and district's commitment to champion for district employees and streamlining the process for our employees to have access to the COVID-19 vaccine. Late last weekend until the weekend, the district, in coordination with the state, held our second multi-day vaccination site effort on district campuses. About 1,200 school employees, 40 and older, and those with a health form signed by a physician, received a single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson immunization. As you may know, this past Monday, April 5th, the state expanded eligibility, meaning all adults are now eligible to receive the vaccine. I am currently working with the state to arrange a third multi-day vaccination effort on district property. That event would be open to school staff of all ages. I will share the logistical information with all school employees as soon as it is available. In the meantime, please continue to visit the district's dedicated COVID-19 vaccination page for the latest information. That's coven, I mean, palmbeachschools.org/covidvaccine. I'd also like to take a moment to pay tribute to the district's assistant principals, a thankless job that I once held. This week is National Assistant Principals Week. It is time to honor these outstanding professionals for their enormous contributions to student success. APs wear many hats. They work tirelessly supporting the principal and the administrative operations of the school. In the course of a day, an assistant principal may observe and evaluate teachers in the classroom, supervise lunch hallways and special events, even handle student discipline issues. They are always just a walkie-talkie away. And I think here in Palm Beach, which is unique to most parts of the country, they also handle hurricane shelters. They were there for our principals during COVID response. They were there for vaccination logistics. So again, our assistant principals do a fantastic job as part of those leadership teams. Thank you, assistant principals, for all that you do for our students and staff. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge two extraordinary leaders in Team Palm Beach who just received some very well-deserved praise from the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, more commonly known as FADS. Diana Fetterman, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and John I. Leonard, Principal Melissa Patterson, recently presented a session during a FADS conference devoted to processes created to achieve equity in our schools. Ms. Fetterman detailed the district's equity vision, while Principal Patterson discussed the district's master board process. The response from the Director of Training and Development at FADS, Diane Morell, was as follows. "This session was awesome. Your work is profoundly important to all superintendents to learn about. I have been training Florida superintendents since 1981, and this was one of the most impactful sessions we have ever had." That is quite high praise and well-deserved. It may not feel like it every day, but I assure you, our dedicated academics team is making great progress in our schools, and I'm excited about the future work that we're gonna do together. Thank you, Melissa and Diane. Mr. Chairman, those are my comments for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. McQuinn, do you have any comments? Ms. Ayala? Mrs. Whitfield? Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, and good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to take a few moments to pay homage to U.S. Congressman Alcee Hastings, an icon, a friend of mine, a personal friend of mine, a fearless fighter for justice, a voice for those without a voice, a civil rights fighter. He was so resilient and loved by many. And when I picked up my Palm Beach Post newspaper this morning, and I saw him, I saw him sitting there, smiling with a lot of little children in his lap or sitting right next to him. He truly cared about the schools and the children of Palm Beach County. I am so proud that I personally knew him. He had a wonderful relationship with my church, Payne Chapel AME Church. He was like a favorite son when he would come to West Palm Beach to visit our church. Everyone reached out to him. He was so excited. I can remember the last time that we were together in the Glades. He was so proud of those three new schools that were built in the Glades. Having worked so hard to make a difference for those that are less fortunate, to see those schools built meant so much to him. And he said to me, "Ms. Andrews, the job is being done by the school district of Palm Beach County, making equity as it relates to facilities and instructions for students all over Palm Beach County and especially the Glades." He was truly loved by many and can never be replaced. We must go forward now and keep the legacy alive and continue to fight for equity, justice, and civil rights. And I'd like to ask everyone in this room to take a moment of silence in memory of our beloved U.S. Congressman Alcee Hastings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. So first, just to follow up, as Ms. Andrews was speaking, I remembered it was Alcee that told me back in like '96 or '97 or something, to quit complaining about the Palm Beach County School District and go fix it. I was like, oh, okay. So you could blame it on him, I'm just saying. But let me go to a different issue, and that's COVID. So, I'm sure you've been hearing about all the variants and all, and so I just want to really say that now is not the time to let down our guard, right? Thankfully, people are getting vaccinated, but the variants, especially the one doc... doc, uh, from the UK is, is more contagious, and the variants from Brazil and South Africa are, are less responsive, slightly less responsive to, to the vaccine. Um, so we really cannot let down our guard. And you may have heard the news reports about the CDC saying essentially, superficially, you would have heard that we could go to three feet social distancing. Don't listen to that because really, they, what they said is what we had been saying before is three feet with a mask, like if you need to. So they said at least three feet, right? And then they went on to recommend that in middle school and high school, it should still be six feet, right? If, if cohorting is not possible, right? So it just, it just took me back to like kind of the original recommendations, if you will. Um, so I was really glad to see, and I think it was a superintendent's letter, that we were still going to do six feet as much as possible, but I want to ask that we closely monitor that, that we reinforce to principals and assistant principals to not let our guard down. Um, you know, there's increasing reports about infections in children, right? It's just really a matter of time. Um, you know, I would hope we could circle back and figure out how we can start doing, uh, more testing in our schools and not just test those with symptoms. As you know, children are more likely to be asymptomatic, um, but there is, there's also documentation that children can, can pass it, pass the virus, right? So, um, the, the, it, the message is don't let down our guard, and, and don't let the fact that people are getting vaccinated and the CDC, the headline was three feet, don't, we can't change anything. We need to continue doing six feet social distancing as much as possible, continue to wear the mask, um, hopefully we could do more testing so that we can identify asymptomatic carriers and, and, and isolate them. Um, and then, and again, we really need to try to do cohorting wherever we can. And as I mentioned before, we really need to make sure our ventilation systems are up to par. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So my comments relate to the proclamation that I'm going to read later, so I'll just make a few comments before I read it. But I want to thank Mrs. Andrews for her, her comments about Congressman Hastings. I will tell you that he was truly one of the most remarkable men I've ever met. Biggest, kindest heart, smart, fierce, respected, and respectable. And I can't just, my, my heart still feels empty feeling his loss. He has big shoes to fill, but I think everyone whose life he's touched, he's made all of us better people. So, thank you.
All right, I have no comments. Uh, that'll take us to, there are no agenda items, speakers, right? Ms. Bass? None. Consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda unless anybody wants to pull anything that's not been pulled. Ms. Brill? I'm making a motion to approve consent agenda, seconded by Ms. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed? Motion carries seven zero. BRD one, I'll read that one. I recommend the board posthumously recognize Mrs. Lillian Alice Pond Gaines, I hope I pronounced that correctly, for her contribution to the school district of Palm Beach County. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Dr. Robinson, I believe you wanted to, um, no, Mrs. Andrews, you wanted to read that.
Thank you. Proclamation of the School Board of Palm Beach County, Florida. Proclamation number 21 dash 02, April 7th, 2021. The School Board of Palm Beach County, Florida, wants to recognize Lillian Alice Pond Gaines, who recently passed away, and to issue this proclamation. Whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines was born in Key West, Florida, on March 29th, 1933, and passed away on March 27th, 2021. And whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines attended Florida A&amp;M College Demonstration High School and Florida A&amp;M College, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts with distinction degree in sociology in 1952, and a Master of Arts in Educational Supervision and Administration in 1953. And whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines was hired as a teacher with the school district of Palm Beach County, where she lovingly taught at Roosevelt High School, Twin Lakes High School, North Technical Vocational Center, Gold Coast Alternative School, and the Adult Education Center. And whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines, after leading a group of citizens in lobbying efforts for school-aged parents, pioneered and began the first teen parent program in the state of Florida in 1971 at Twin Lakes High School. And whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines was instrumental in growing the teen parent program from one site to a comprehensive countywide program at many schools that provided individualized education, taught parenting skills, and offered counseling services and an onsite daycare for children of teen parents. And whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines was credited with the expansion of this program throughout the state of Florida to be the first in the nation to allocate public funds for such a program, which led to the 1989 passage by the Florida Legislature of Section 1003.5423023166, Florida Statute of Teenage Parent Program. This statute requires all school districts to develop and implement teenage parent programs for pregnant and parenting teens. And whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines was appointed by Governor Lawton Charles to the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County in 1991, and served as Chair of the Council. Together with former Palm Beach County Commissioner Maude Ford Lee, the Children's Service Council, under her leadership, broke barriers to philanthropic redlining by successiv, successfully redistribting, redistributing millions of funds and resources to Black and underserved children in need. She championed and built power in the Black community that, by demanding equitable shares of these funds flow through Black-led organizations and Black children in need. Whereas, Lillian Alice Pond Gaines co-chaired the African and African-American History Curriculum Task Force, where her work in collaboration with the Coalition for Black Student Achievement resulted in the school district of Palm Beach County developing and launching the first such curriculum in the state of Florida in 2002. Now therefore, the School Board of Palm Beach County, Florida, proclaims that. Section one, the foregoing recitals are true, correct, and incorporated in this proclamation by this reference. Section two, the school board wishes to honor and recognize posthumously Lillian Alice Pond Gaines for her contributions to the school district for the many years of dedicated service and devotion to teaching, caring, and advocating for children in the Palm Beach County School District for over 50 years. Section three, the school board wishes to honor and recognize posthumously Lillian Alice Pond Gaines for her honors, including the first state merit Teacher of the Year, Apple of the Year by Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Coalition for Black Student Achievement, Sankofa Award, Palm Beach Post Unsung Heroes II, Black History Month Special Edition Section, Palm Beach County Dwyer Award for Vocational Adult Education, Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County, and the West Palm Beach Chapter of the Links Incorporated. Section four, this proclamation shall take effect immediately, the seventh day of April 2021. The School Board of Palm Beach County, Florida, a corporate body, public, Frank A. Barbieri, our Board Chair, Karen Brill, School Board Member, Vice Chair, Alexander Ayala, School Board Member, Deborah L. Robinson, School Board Member, Dr. Donald E. Fanoi, Superintendent, Marsha Andrews, School Board Member, Barbara McQuinn, School Board Member, and Erica Whitfield, School Board Member. And to Dr. Robinson and the passing of your mother-in-law, this school board and this school family here will be praying for you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews, for reading that forth. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda is COM one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board proclaim April 4th through 11th, 2021, as Holocaust Days of Remembrance.
Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So each year, we read this proclamation, um, but today I want to share a little information with you. Holocaust Days of Remembrance is an eight-day period designated by Congress for commemorations remembering and sharing lessons learned from the Holocaust. It begins on the Sunday before Yom HaShoah. Yom HaShoah is Holocaust Remembrance Day. It coincides with the 27th of Nisan on the Hebrew calendar, which is not quite parallel to ours, which is why it moves around in April and May every year, we do this at a different time. Um, but it marks the beginning of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising of 1943, when Jewish resistance fighters defied the Nazis and fought for freedom and dignity. Sundown tonight through sundown tomorrow is actually Yom HaShoah, Holocaust Remembrance Day. Before I read our proclamation, I'm going to share words with you today from the White House proclamation on days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust. And I quote, "We honor the memories of precious lives lost, contemplate the incomprehensible wound to our humanity, mourn for the communities broken and scattered, and embrace those who survived the Holocaust, some of whom are still with us today, continuing to embody extraordinary resilience after all these years. Having borne witness to the depths of evil, these survivors remind us of the vital refrain, 'Never again.'" "The history of the Holocaust is forever seared into the history of humankind, and it is the shared responsibility of all people to ensure the horrors of the Shoah can never be erased from our collective memory." And so now I'm going to read our proclamation, but just, um, to our board clerk, Mrs. Bass, um, if you could revise the date at the bottom of the proclamation, please, to reflect tonight. Whereas, "The Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Six million were murdered. Roma, gypsies, people with disabilities and poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny." And whereas, "The Holocaust, history of the Holocaust, offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, the school district of Palm Beach County should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas, the school district of Palm Beach County should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas, the Days of Remembrance has been set aside for the school district of Palm Beach County to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. And whereas, pursuant to an act of Congress, Public Law 96388 on October 7, 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 4 through Sunday, April 11, including the Day of Remembrance known as Yom HaShoah, April 8, 2021. Now therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and school board of Palm Beach County do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 4 through Sunday, April 11, 2021, as Days of Remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we, the school district of Palm Beach County, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs, done this seventh day of April 2021 in West Palm Beach, Florida." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. POL A two, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve development of proposed new policy 8.124, electronic device take-home policy.
Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Uh, Dr. Robinson, you pulled that?
Yes, I pulled this, um, because I wanted to, as I did before, push back on this, um, concept that if a device was lost, stolen, or damaged, that, um, basically, parents would have to pay out of pocket and possibly put themselves in a situation, um, you know, where we are withholding, um, some academic service, if you will. Um, what I wanted to do was to point to the board, point out to the board, policy 8.1225, Instructional Materials Accountability, which talks about student consequences, um, if the end-of-the-year obligation has not been satisfied, and it talks about suspension from extracurricular activities, as well as possibly, um, using community service hours to essentially repay the debt. And so, um, and then it also talks about refunds for, for found books, but, so, I don't know if I would need to, like, read this whole thing, or if I can ask, um, legal to determine how they would insert such language into, into this, um, policy, but I'm definitely against, um, just expecting parents to pay, um, because some don't have the means.
Ms. McQuinn?
Thank you, and I agree with Dr. Robinson. Instructional materials are instructional materials, so let's, let's be, um, parallel on that. I, I would like, however, to, um, I would have pulled this item had it not, had it not already been pulled. I want to refer to a comment that I was quoted in the Palm Beach Post article today about the policy, and, and I was quoted correctly. Although it sounded a little harsh, so I want to put it in perspective, it was not meant to be harsh. Now, I'm going to read my statement, for those of you who don't know. Uh, Barbara, Board Member Barbara McQuinn pointed out that school administrators need some leverage over families in order to ensure the return of the devices. If there's wiggle room, and by that I meant to get out of being responsible for the devices, we're not going to get things back, and we can't afford to do that. Now, my comment to that is that as a school district, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that instructional materials of all kinds are cared for, and that parents in, work with their children to understand that they have to take care of those. They're paid for with public dollars. What I want to point out, and it probably is from the old textbook policy, I can't tell you how much time we spend, schools spend, making sure those textbooks come in and making sure that they get paid for if they're damaged, and how, what percentage of the amount of, in terms of how old the book is, it's a lot of time, but it's a lot of money. We always, as a school, and I don't know any who did not, you allow that community service to serve in place of paying back with money. And I never, a parent just had to say, um, "Dr. Sheffield, my daughter, provided community service hours, this many, ever how many we said," and the parent signs it. That's all we did. Nobody was, you know, we were not the, um, community service hours police. So, parent says they did it, they did it. The other thing, we also were very creative. I don't know that it is 100% the way it should have been, but I'm telling you, it's a win-win, and that is that students who instead preferred to stay after school for tutoring, and we were able to pay and we were able to pay the teachers with school improvement money, if they wanted to stay after school for tutoring or just help with their homework, or if you're a really good student and wanted to help others with homework, we also allowed those as hours. So there are lots of creative ways that you're not taking dollars out of parents' pockets who cannot afford that. Thank you.
Ms. Ayala, then Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you. I reiterate that I was going to pull this if it wasn't already because I've had concerns over the financial aspect. And I wanted to ask for some clarification on the discrepancy in numbers from data that I received from Mr. Burke on your response from our last conversation on this. I appreciate that. It just seems, you know, almost, it says here, $98,394 in fees were charged. So far, $5,295 have been collected, leaving an outstanding of $93,099. It's a large amount. We obviously have expenses. These devices cost, what do Chromebooks now, $200 to $300 a Chromebook?
About $275 on average.
Or $400? Okay. So, I understand, and I think if we can do stuff on the front end on education, how to take care of a device, if cases need to be part of the purchasing or something to protect it for minor wear and tear, just putting that out there. But is there any inclination as to why, if it's not financial need because people do not have the funds to go towards this, why this discrepancy is so large in what's been collected and how much money there is that's outstanding?
The, well, I mean, just to provide some context, we've, you know, we're fairly new in this one-to-one device world, but we've had, we've got $810,000 worth of breakage to date since we started handing out devices last spring. So it's significant. We've got about 8% breakage rate. The national average is like 6%. So, I agree with you that some training on the front end might help because it seems like we're breaking a little more than the average school district. The, you know, so if you look at the $810,000 in damage that we have to pay for, now, some things were covered under warranty. Right now, we've got 3,000 devices that are awaiting repair. So we're having an issue with the vendors that we have. They've got about 2,000 of them, and our district team picked up 1,000 to try to fix them ourselves. We really, we're going to have to probably put some more bids out to get more vendor capacity, just to keep up. And we're kind of learning, to some extent, as we go. I don't know exactly why, you know, so the principals have, you know, it's obvious that $98,000, they're not going after every student. You know, some of this breakage might be, you know, explainable and not necessarily deliberate or vandalism. So you're already seeing, you know, from $810,000 down to $90,000, that's quite a drop-off. I'm not sure about the collection, the pace of that, how that goes once the obligation's created and how long it normally takes to actually collect the money or allow the kid to do community service. I would say, what I've heard some of the board members say, I just like to reiterate, this isn't instructional material. You know, for decades, we've spent roughly $15 million a year on textbooks. And that process has worked. I mean, it allows some discretion to our principals. They determine the obligations and they work through that. And, you know, textbooks are not cheap. I mean, if you buy books in college or whatever, you know, you know you can spend $100 on a book now. So, I think that same type of process would lend itself to these devices, which are actually coming down in price over time. And I think it's important that we allow some latitude to the schools to make those decisions and take into consideration, you know, did, you know, did the kid have an accident and fall and land on the computer? Or is the kid, you know, broke three computers in the same week? So, I hope I'm answering your question. I was just trying to add a little context to some of my thoughts around this. I'd have to follow up, I guess, a little more and try to say, okay, if we've assigned, you know, $98,000 in obligations, why is that collection so modest? And is it a result of us being in this hybrid environment where some, you know, 42% of our kids or whatever are still in their, at home? Or, I don't know. You know, there's, student obligations tend to get paid more when there's something on the line that the kid is interested in doing.
They want to go to Grad Bash.
We haven't had a lot of extracurricular events and stuff in this environment.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up? I appreciate that context, and I'm glad to hear that steps are being taken to figure this out. It's certainly been a year of figuring a lot of things out. I look forward to the information that Dr. Robinson requested that should be with us in a few weeks at the end of April for breaking down where this, where the, you know, where the damage is happening, what students, and break that kind of down to see where it's really affecting families. And I get that we have to consider a lot here. I mean, one of the first things I said when I came onto the board was I saw a laptop on Facebook Marketplace or OfferUp or something, and I was like, absolutely not. I mean, this is a huge investment and trust that the community's put in us for these dollars, so it has to be used right. So if there needs to be some kind of campaign at the beginning of the year showing proper device usage, and we take care of our laptops and our things because they're an essential device at this point, we cannot learn without these, I think that could do a lot. And I look forward to seeing how we don't punish families who don't have the means when it comes to this, if it is really an accident or something that was, you know, unintentional. If a student is setting it, you know, running it over with a bike or dropping it intentionally or putting it on their Snapchat that they're messing with it, that's a different story. And I trust principals to take care of things on an as-case-by-case basis in terms of how they move forward with that. But thank you for that. I just reiterate my colleagues that I don't want this to turn into haves and have-nots when it comes to devices and punish students down the road for things that they may want if there are alternative methods to solving the problem. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Dr. Adam Miller for bringing it up at the last workshop, that just trying to punish is not the way we do business here in Palm Beach County when a child has a problem as it relates to his laptop or it's broken or can't find it. We don't know what kind of circumstances many of the children have been through over this last year. It was just fortunate that the district has done such a great job to make sure that every child has a laptop. And so, you know, I go back to my days of being in the school center when children didn't have money for lunch or they lost their lunch money or they didn't have anything to eat, and sometimes they had to sit there with nothing. The district did a better job in making sure that we found ways to make sure that children had food to eat. And many of our sponsors from our business organizations pooled money to make sure they paid off the debt of lunchroom dues that kids had owed because they didn't have any money and still couldn't get any money and still could be sitting in the cafeteria not eating. We've got to be responsive to our children and what situations they come from and where they are in life and what kind of supervision that they have in life. And so, I'm just happy to know that there's going to be other options, and I'd like for us to explore the possibilities of talking to some of our big business people out there from the corporate world to see how they can help us, you know, with having a fund set up to help some of these children who, no fault of their own, had a problem and damaged their laptop or didn't have electricity at their house and was trying to use the computer, whatever it was that was going on in their family. We don't know where our children have been over this last year based on this pandemic, you know? And so, we want to get the laptop back. We want to be sensitive, and I think the principals are sensitive. And with the policy that we're talking about, it will certainly help us to know that when we see that it's legitimate and there is a real concern about what happened here and it was not intentional, that we're going to do everything that we can to keep that child upbeat, involved in school, and making sure that they have a computer to work with. So our business partners may be able to help us out a little bit with that, too.
So, Mr. Burke, how much did you say total was the?
The, our, now, some repairs were handled under warranties. There was no cost. But what we've had, what we've experienced so far is $810,000 in breakage and repairs.
Eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand?
Eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand. So it's significant, you know?
Yeah, it was almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
So I understand, you know, I guess I got mixed feelings about this. I mean, there are families that can afford to replace those. I certainly don't want to force a family to go between eating or replacing a laptop, you know, that the kid brought home. But these children need to be taught responsibility. We have a whole generation of kids out there who think everything's free. You know, it's like mommy and daddy will just buy it for me. So, you know, if we don't give the principals the authority, and I don't know how we do that, so that they can pick and choose who's going to pay because I don't want any, you know, I don't want it to turn into a discriminatory situation and one school does this and another school does it this way. But I mean, there's got to be some consequences to make sure that these kids understand that that is an expensive piece of equipment, that the taxpayers have bought us and the charitable organizations out there, like the Education Foundation, have ponied up millions of dollars to buy this stuff. And a million dollars to fix it because the kids are dropping it or whatever? I want to make sure there's some kind of consequences to these kids. And again, I'm not suggesting that we take food out of their mouths in order to pay for the computer. But, you know, just to say, you know, what mom says that the kid did 40, you know, community service hours and so the debt's paid, I don't buy it. I don't buy it. You know, if we're going to give community service hours, and they need to be documented by the school that the kid goes to, so that there's some, we're sure that these kids understand that there are consequences. We had that, earlier today, we had a, you know, an expulsion. And, you know, and unfortunately, the child didn't understand the consequences of what he was doing. He thought it was funny, a joke, and, you know, got expelled. So, these kids need to understand consequences. So I'm not so quick in that saying that, let's give all these kids a pass, and if their families can't afford it, then, you know, they come for tutoring or whatever. I mean, I don't buy it. So I don't know how you're going to come up with a policy that makes sure that it's equitable, so that we're not being discriminatory and all children are treated the same. I'm not sure we do that because all children aren't the same. Some families can't afford to pay to replace that, and some families can't. So I'll leave it up to you masterminds and how you come up with a policy that says, this family's going to pay for it, this family is going to do community service instead. But there's got to be responsibility here. A million dollars in breakage in a one-year period of time is ridiculous. I mean, if the taxpayers heard us saying, it's no big deal, it's only a million dollars, I mean, it's a million dollars. I mean, that's a lot of money, just short of a million dollars. So, I, you know, I don't agree with some of the comments my colleagues made other than I don't want to take food out of a family's mouth in order to pay for a computer. But there's a whole heck of a lot of families out there that can afford to fix their kids' mistakes, and if they don't hold their kids responsible, then we need to hold those kids responsible.
I guess, well...
Ms. McQuinn?
Ms. Whitfield's hand was up first. Thank you.
Sorry, who's?
I guess I just wanted to say...
I think her hand was up first.
I didn't hear you said was first.
Ms. Whitfield's hand was up first, I believe.
Whitfield, then I saw Dr. Robinson. Ms. McQuinn after Ms. Whitfield.
Thank you. I just, this one's tricky because I feel like what we're supposed to do in this policy is really codify what is in practice right now, which I believe that principals are working with the students when they need. They know, I mean, our principals know our students. They know if the student is struggling. I just wanted to share, at Coniston, this is not punitive, but my daughter, for part of the student government, they actually go and clean the school, and she gets hours for that. So they go around with garbage and pick up and, you know, take care and take some ownership of their school. And I think this is a beautiful thing and actually could save, you know, on some of the dollars that we spend. So it's, I think it, I don't want it to be a punitive thing to do something like that. But I think we have community service opportunities within our building that we can even ask for the students to do that. So I think we have to find a way to put in policy that a principal has the right to make these decisions because they understand their children, they know who they are, who they're dealing with. I don't want to take money from families who can't afford it, and I do think some children can, and their parents would just rather pay for it. And I think when possible, we need to at least have some ability to tell our principals, okay, you can hold them to this because sometimes they know they can pay, and then they should pay. If they're purposely, like, damaging devices, I think I mentioned this during our last meeting, I had talked to one of our principals, and they said that a student was on their fourth device and the parent had actually punched it as a part of being angry at the child. So, like, to me, in that case, like, we have to have something that we can say, you can't do this, you have to take care of the equipment we're giving. So, I really think we have to at least give the principals some power in all this. And I don't want to policy them so much that they don't even have the ability to make decisions.
Mr. Barbieri, if I may, if this will help, on bullet five, if you're looking at your consent item, and if you have the red line document, policy line 165 through 167 speaks to exactly what you are making reference to. Principals/designees are directed to work with parents or guardian to help satisfy student obligation on a non-discriminatory basis. And it goes on within the policy. So we do have it in there where the principal will work with the families in meeting and satisfying the obligation.
All right, Ms. McQuinn?
I'm good with what Dr. Sheffield shared.
Dr. Robinson?
Well, thank you for pointing that out, Dr. Sheffield. So I'm now walking into philosophical land. So, so we want the money, right? We would prefer the money. Right, Mr. Burke? We would prefer the money.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to replace the device and buy a new one, so...
Yes. So I just need to wrap my mind around that fact because here's, so here's the truth of the matter is, so, to Mr. Barbieri's point, some parents could just up the money, right? And their children learn zero consequences, right? And, but what we're saying is, if your parents can't pay, we're going to make sure you learn consequences. So that's by itself is a disparity, right? I'm just saying. I'm just calling the truth, right? So, but I get that we want the money, so I just want to start there. I think that I really would want the consequences a little bit more described, the potential consequences described in the policy. But, again, thank you for pointing that out because I'm not really quite sure how I missed it. But if you could just compare and contrast to what's outlined in the Instructional Materials Accountability?
And we referenced that, Dr. Robinson, as you asked us to go back last time, and that would be lines 169 through...
Yeah, you did, didn't you?
Through 174. Where consequences and the payment of obligations will follow the same procedures as instructional materials. A preference for community service hours is stated. This can be found on lines 169 through 174.
Okay, so Dr. Sheffield, you got me. That's the payback for the choice workshop? So, all right, I'm done. Zip.
Ms. Brill?
I think it's important for all of us to take a moment and remember, when we started handing out devices, it was like a military operation. We didn't have any, it was, I remember me and Mike were alone in the room one night, and I said, "Look, I don't know how this is going, but order as many as you can." And we started socializing with you guys, like, I think that first order was like 20 million or something before. We got ahead of the curve and it was still delayed. And if you really remember, and we will at some point do like the year review, which will probably make all of us cry, but we had principals in the sun, we had laptops on pallets. It was full-on triage. And the schools did a Herculean job of documenting what they could. But we didn't create a formal process. It was, they were coming off the boat and the plane. We went to go pick them up in trucks. We showed up up front. Most of us were still quarantined. It was, so again, I think that, and so, now that we know, we've done it. So, I appreciate what everybody's saying, but the thing that we really have to do is educate people on the front end. We have to create all these videos, we have to be very clear. Again, we have all this new technology, and so we need to do stuff for parents, kids, you know, create the videos, I have to take care of it. Mike and I talked about a month ago, because a couple of schools who were experiencing, like, giving kids two, three, four machines, but we didn't have any cases. We didn't buy those at the beginning. Like, it's a lot of, we learned that we needed to buy chargers at one point, I think, Mike. It was, we learned a lot over the course of the year. So, we just, you know, I know Dr. Miller's here. So we now know what we don't know. And I think we'll just have to do a lot of preventive, like, stuff on the front end. And I would argue probably periodically. You know, we have the technology to do that. Like, maybe we push out something to all the computers, reminding, like, updates on taking care of your computer, things like that. So I want us to be very proactive this time. We weren't proactive last time because we didn't have an ability to be proactive. And that'll help. And then maybe our teachers can learn some lessons on how to remind kids of how to do this stuff, right? You know, my son's broke one time, and the consequence was he had to use mine until we got it ready. And that was just a thing. And so, I think Sand and the team were able to fix it. But I think, I don't want anybody beat up over this. Listen, we did the best we could with what we had at the time, and now we know how to move forward. And I just want to thank the board and everybody for just taking a moment to reflect on how we even got here.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So, Dr. Sheffield, you pointed out what I was going to point out regarding lines 170 to 175. And Dr. Fanoi, I was going to talk about it being a fire drill when we pushed out those computers. So, I like the idea of reminders on the screen or something that we can, you know, give people. I had jotted down that maybe, I think for the next school year, in the school handbooks, we need to have something about parental and student responsibility. So it needs to be, we need to find different places to remind everybody about it. But I'd certainly throw it into the handbooks also because, as Dr. Fanoi said, we didn't have these procedures in place at the time. But I do get the importance, you know, and we all agree. know, and we all agree, we don't want families to not eat, you know, to suffer. I trust our principals, they know their students to be able to make those decisions, but I, I think this is a great starting point. Thank you.
And Ms. Burke, we did make notice, um, of putting it in the handbook, and that would be your first bullet item on the consent, um, lines 43, 44. So we will make sure of that.
Okay, any other comments?
Can I just make a quick comment? I mean, I agree, it was a fire drill, and we got thrown into mass distribution quickly, but we did track all the devices through our software, the same software we use for textbooks, so we have an accounting and inventory of these devices in case anyone's concerned.
Yes, that is true. I'm glad you clarified that. What I'm speaking to is, we didn't train people, it was-
Yeah, no, I, I mean, we didn't have time to sit with a student and say, here's how you take care of it.
No, I, I remember Camille Coman and her team, and, 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 um, uh, Ms. Moore and the Glaze, they were going to neighborhoods to drop them off. I mean, we really, and I, I, I can't wait for us to really reflect on, on how much work you guys actually did to get all of that stuff done, so thanks, Mike.
But Dr. Fanoi, to that point, as we talk about, and I know we're talking as it pertains to distance learning, and the opportunities, and what we were able to front-load, and what we were not able to front-load, but then we also have to just be, you know, thank the board, thank the community, as we think about our technology trailblazers, and the referendums and so forth. Because when we took on that initiative with the technology trailblazers, and that you think about the number of Google-certified teachers that we have here in this district, which we are leading the nation here, and Dr. Miller can speak to that, it really put us ahead of the ballgame in regards to our teachers, um, being able to, um, turn on and help us navigate in this space of distance learning as rapidly as they did. So as we talk about the one-to-one devices for our students, um, I'd mentioned to Mr. Burke, um, I don't even know what day of the week it is anymore, um, where we were talking about the replacement of devices for our students, then I said, well, we also have to think about our teachers and those technology trailblazers, those Google-certified teachers that we have, where we have also taken their devices and we have, allowing the students to utilize them at home. Because when our teachers come back, and they are now Google-certified, Google has really worked with the school district of Palm Beach County in regarding to, um, leveraging some of their platforms, how do we continue, um, that space with our educators? So, definitely, we know it's, um, it's not perfect, but we've made some leaps and bounds.
If I may, Dr. Sheffield, we have more Google-certified educators than any other district in the world, so just wanted to clarify, not the nation, the world.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
And I'm going to throw one else out there. Unlike a lot of districts, we didn't pay for a service, we built it. And I, and I want you to understand how much money that saved us to, to have this team build what we created. Um, and I, and you know, and I, you know, if I had my way, I think Google owes us some intellectual property money, but I'll leave that alone.
All right, if there's no more discussion, we'll vote on, on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Next item, Mr. Superintendent, policy 1.092.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve adoption of proposed revised policy 1.092, Inspector General.
Motion by Ms. Ayala, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield, and that item was pulled by Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank, uh, Mrs. Michael. I've spent quite a bit of time talking with her about the policy, and in fact, I was here, as we discussed it the last time, and in section 9D, uh, where, uh, we talked a lot about the delays in posting of substantiated and unsubstantu, uh, uh, unsubstantiated investigative reports until time that all the required investigations are completed, I like that. But, uh, to remove the requirement to post unfounded investigative reports on the IG website, uh, that's a problem for me. And I think I said it at the last meeting, I really do believe that people need to be able to see that we're transparent, even if it's unfounded. I think it's a way, in my mind, for me to know that, uh, it's out there, and people can see that even though, um, someone made, uh, an allegation against me, it was unfounded, and the public does know that. The transparency was very important to me, so I, I like most of the changes here, but I won't be supporting this because of that piece. Thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, and, um, I, I agree with Mrs. Andrews. Um, that's the same comment that I made in the past, I won't support the policy because I do believe that for transparency, it needs to be there. And I don't know where it is in the policy, and I apologize, I, I didn't bring my copy with me, but there was a piece where we said that we released it to the press. I think, you know, I, I thought that we had said that it's automatically sent to them when we complete the investigation. Um, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, because I was told by the press that they, they don't receive it, so.
With the posting on the website, that would be the release to the press. What I had recommended is if we didn't have the posting on the website, that we would automatically send them a press release with that, so that they would get it no matter what. Uh, but since that wasn't done, we are posting them on the website, that would be their notice and their copy.
Other comments? Ms., Ms. Michael, you want to give us your position on taking unsubstantiated and putting them on the website?
I, I completely understand the concerns of having it posted on the website, and I think that there's been a lot of confusion as far as, um, the different allegations and some of the concerns. And I think we've seen some reports that have come out, that we do a lot of things that are very personal in nature, there'll be some investigations, and when you have something that's completely unfounded, you know, this is something that could be weaponized and could be used that way. Now, you know, as I said, there is not another inspector general that we've been able to find that posts all of them, that's required to post all of them. But, again, it is completely the board's decision, I will, you know, follow the policy, however the board requires it. I just, my recommendation is that we follow the, the standard that every other IG, and there's a reason behind that. Um, but, again, I'll follow whatever the board's direction.
Let me ask you a question. If, if it's unfounded, um, the press still has a right to see it, if they ask for it?
Of course. It's, it's, it's always a public record. There is never a, a chance where you would not. If it's unfounded, we can still send a copy to them and a press release.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you. So, I mean, you could send them a copy, but, you know, if it's unfounded, they may not know it's there. So, again, I think that, yes, we're doing something different than the other inspector general offices have. I think that we've done a great job, we've not had any problems to date. And my feeling is if everything that's up on the website is substantiated, people are going to look and say, wow, what a corrupt district, where, if we're more transparent. Because, you know, we're talking about the anomalies in terms of, you know, personal or whatever, um, that could be out there. Um, but there's a lot of things that have to do with the use of money, um, in the district that does get investigated, that is unsubstantiated, and those people that, you know, that have heard through the grapevine that this was brought to the IG, if they don't ever see the closure to it, that, that bothers me. So, you know, I just think that, um, because there is so much that's out there, and because we are the stewards of the money, and it is fraud, waste, and abuse, and that's primarily what you receive, um, that's why I'd like it to be, you know, fully transparent.
So, board members, we need to make a decision here, because three of you said you wanted it on the website, so I need to hear from, they need to hear from the rest of us. Mrs. Whitfield?
I feel like we maybe just need to call the question.
The question's been called on the approval of the policy as written. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five, two.
Thank you.
Let me get back to the agenda. Um, that takes us to the board discussion item, BD 1. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, you know, it's a sad time, uh, that we're experiencing the loss of our U.S. Congressman, Alcee Hastings, a legend, an icon. Uh, I'm sure you've seen it on the website, you've seen it on the news, someone who did so much for this, this community, Palm Beach County, Broward County, uh, at the state, at the local level, at the federal level. Uh, we've got to do something here in Palm Beach County to show that we really do appreciate everything he's done for our schools, our children, our community economic status. He has been, uh, someone that was a, a trailblazer, uh, within, uh, the, uh, the legendary, uh, federal, uh, congressional office, all those years. He's the longest-serving, longest-serving congressional, uh, congressman, uh, from the state of Florida, just so many accolades. And so, I know the first thing we definitely will do is a proclamation, hopefully as this board and, and this discussion, you could say yes to that. And I think that we need to say something to our children about who he is and what he's meant to us, but hopefully maybe a school, the naming of a school or a building, or something has to be said, uh, about who he is and what he's done, and what he's given his life for, for Palm Beach County. And he has really carried those districts. When we're talking about equity and how we look at ourselves and know we hadn't done what we should have done, he was a force pushing people, like a Dr. Robinson, when I got elected to the board, and as well as all the other board members, saying, we can get it done for Palm Beach County, we can be better than this. And I just had a chance to talk to, uh, Dr. Sheffield yesterday, because I was worried about the students, uh, the young people who may not know who U.S. Congressman Alcee Hastings is. And she reminded me, and I wrote this down, because I want to read it to you, and she remembered him from being a principal and really working through this district. And Dr. Sheffield said to me, uh, "The U.S. Congressman Alcee Hastings will ever be remembered for his contributions made to the school district of Palm Beach County. His allegiance to government and desire to work to improve opportunities for his constituents did not go unnoticed, unnoticed. Most importantly, his support with the Law Academy, right there at Palm Beach Lakes Community High School, provided many opportunities for students and teachers. This is only one of the many examples of the work he did with our, with our schools." And so she said to me on yesterday, she said, "Ms. Andrews, I can commit that the Department of Curriculum will incorporate lessons into all history classes, educating students about U.S. Congressman Alcee Hastings and his many contributions. It is important for the students to fully understand how their civic duty plays an important role in this society. And here we have someone who is no longer with us, but he's left the footprints of the work that needs to be done. So we have to honor him in any way we can, uh, for those wonderful things that he's done, but also to educate our students, for them to know their history, based on all the wonderful, uh, opportunities that he has provided for us." So, I'd like for us to discuss this, and really, uh, think seriously about doing all three of these things, uh, in honor of our U.S. Congressman Alcee Hastings. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Well, I agree with you, Mrs. Andrews. I think the resolution is, is easy, um, and I think that, um, we can make sure that our young people at every grade level learn, um, about Congressman Hastings and, and his struggle and his contributions, right? And, um, you know, I just remember, he gave me a Mildred Hastings Award, he gave me an award named after his mother. I have to go find that. But, um, what I also think that I will do is, according to our policy, I believe the School Advisory Council has to come forward to recommend a name change, um, and I think it would be appropriate, I'm going to go to the School Advisory Council at Palm Beach Lakes High School and ask them, um, how they would feel about such, uh, because I know that Palm Beach Lakes, well, actually, all the schools in Palm Beach County seem to be near and dear, um, to Alcee, but I, I, I know, um, we visited Palm Beach Lakes together at times, so, um, I think I'll go that route. Thank you.
All right, board members, so if you're okay with it, we'll get a proclamation for the next board meeting. Mrs. Andrews, would you work with the board clerk on that? Because on, on Mrs. Gaines, we were, she was given a lot of information that went into the proclamation, so if you could help with that?
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Robinson, because I was sitting here trying to figure out what, you know, we do need to do something meaningful, and I think that would be a great school. And yes, absolutely, um, Congressman Hastings touched every school in every area. Um, some of you may not know, he lived in my district in one of the Valencias, so, um, you know, I would see him also at some of the senior community events. Um, he'd, he'd go wherever he could when he was around, and when his health was good,